Like to call the June 6th meeting of the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Steele, will you call?
Mr. Gibson?
Here.
Dr. Orff?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Crisco?
Here.
Mr. Hedrick?
Here.
Mr. Bizani?
Here.
All present.
Next, we're gonna have Pastor Ann Tang of Salem United Methodist and Olive Branch United Methodist Church come up. But before, can we have a moment of silence for D-Day survivors and losts?
Let us pray.
We're not.
Gracious Lord, and I'll have you, Father, thank you for carrying us through almost half of the year 2023. Every day, we count our blessings. As we gather this evening, may your Holy Spirit fill us with wisdom, compassion, and strength, as we discern and carry out the ministry to take care of the residents and businesses of Gloucester County. Protect our schools and our children, keep them in the path of your hands, O God, and grant us peace. We pray this in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. So move, Mr. Chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is matters presented by the board.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Crisco.
Yes, I have a couple of quick items here and maybe if there's any thought, we can bring this back up during supervisor discussion. But the real estate tax bills have started hitting everyone's mailboxes. Not everybody has received theirs yet. I know that there's only supposed to be, I think by code, they have to have 14 days before they receive them and payment can be due. I just thought that the board may want to consider extending that to July the 15th. If so, we can do that at supervisor discussion with a motion, not at this moment in time if we need to. If that's, I just wanted to bring it up so we can think about it, we can discuss it then. And then, the other thing that I have concern is some of the personal property tax bills that I've been hearing about, people having cars that are two and three years old that are currently still valued higher than a brand-new car of the same make and model, that would be a 23 or 24 model year, brand-new car. Their car that's two to three years old with 30,000 miles is being valued higher than even what they paid for it three years ago. So I think we're going to see some higher-than-normal monies come in. So we may want to consider what to do with that if that is the case, if we're way over budget on that. The other item that I have, there are some speakers here are gonna speak to it during citizen comment. So I'll bring that back up during supervisor discussion. Thank you.
All right. Can't administer a item? Anybody else? Can't administer a item?
Okay, I have a number of them, but I'll try to go quick. First, I want to make sure everybody is aware that the Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Department, or the Parks and Rec aspect of it, will be turning 50 this year. And July is Parks and Recreation National Month. So on July 14th, there'll be a 50-year celebration birthday-type party from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Woodville and hope the public will turn out for that. There are a number of events that are going on right now. We just had a wonderful symphony. But I want to remind everybody to keep looking at the Gloucester Arts Festival calendar of events. There's activities tomorrow, Friday, and Saturday. There'll be Paint Main from 10:00 to 12:00 on Main Street. So a little bit more congestion on Main Street than normal. Hopefully, good congestion. July 4th, reminder about obeying the fireworks laws and not shooting. Good luck. Please obey the fireworks laws. And we just don't want to see anybody hurt. And if we are on track, we hope, the county attorney's been working very closely with our regional communications representative and AT&amp;T to have a contract that'll be ready to go to public hearing. So if the board is okay with it, with a nod ahead, there's really not, you know, full decision because legally, we can do the public hearing, but don't want to do it without your approval. But if it happens in between meetings, since we're not having but one meeting, we would like to go ahead and schedule the public hearing if the time allows, so. Okay, very good, thank you. At 4:30 tonight, maybe, or this afternoon, maybe some people are out there cheating and looking if there's a way to. But our very own Gloucester High School baseball team made it to the States. They came in second in the region and they are playing in the state tournament right now against Cox High School in Virginia Beach. So we hope we'll get a good report maybe by the end of the meeting. There's a number of announcements are gonna be going out, especially phone calls to those who live in the area. The board's all been made aware. There's lots of promotions, but it doesn't matter. There'll still be people who have no idea that there's gonna be a lot of construction going on around, on Guinea Road this summer. So it's gonna start on Monday, June 12th, and it will run all the way through September 1st. And it is a major reclamation project where they'll be going down more than a foot deep. So a lot of different work. They'll be lowering the speed limit with the, temporarily where the construction area is going on. And most of the work will be done Monday through Friday. But just want to make the public aware so they can plan ahead of time and not try to go too fast or anything.
Ms. Steele?
Yes?
Yeah, a quick question. With all the material that they're gonna be excavating from that road, we may want to touch this with Louie Lawrence because they might be able to get that stuff put on the road that's toward the Captain Sinclair property to continue to build that road back up since they've built that brand-new pier out there and encouraging people to use it.
Well, I will.
Yeah.
I, um...
They used some of the material before in that road.
Right.
But I can tell you from the last few times I've been there, the last few days, starting to wear out.
Okay.
Does that come back real well?
It does pretty well, yeah, it does real well, yeah.
I mean, we would have to talk, but the problem is, most of the time, it's in the contract that they use it to remelt from more asphalt.
I'm sure they do, but it wouldn't work.
Well, we'll definitely check with Mr. McKnight.
I mean, they're gonna be digging up a lot of stuff.
And see if there's...
Even a couple loads because they used that before, and I think it's held up really well.
Okay, great. The last thing I have, I believe the board received an invitation, but want to make sure that the public is also aware of it, that the historic Bethel Baptist Church will be celebrating its 156th anniversary. On Sunday, July 16th, they'll have the Lieutenant Governor, Honorable Wensom Earl Sears, speaking at 12 o'clock. And there'll be events also on Friday, July 14th. And I'm sure there'll be more information in the newspaper about that, too. But that's very exciting. And that's it, thank you.
There are no scheduled presentations, so now we'll move to citizen comment period. If you'd like to speak, come up, state your name and magisterial district, and you've got three minutes to speak.
Hey, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here and thank you for all you do to represent this area and your work for the citizens. My name is Sarah Stoneburner, and I'm a physician and surgeon. And my husband and I own a place on Mariners Watch Lane. We actually live in North Carolina and have retired recently. And we're thinking of moving back to Virginia where I'm from. So wanted to make sure you're aware of Oyster Project permit application with the VMRC that would affect our area of the North River. I grew up coming here. I joke that I came here since before I was born. My grandfather, who was a physician in Virginia, in Richmond, bought a cabin here on the North River, Waukegan, and it's been in the family. And we just love coming here, it's a family place. It's such a beautiful place on earth. And I've been coming to Gloucester my whole life. And my husband and I were so fortunate to be able to purchase this place on the North River where we can kayak between our place and Waukegan. And it's also on Davis Creek. And much to our surprise, we became aware of this oyster permit application to the VMRC. And we're just so shocked and surprised to learn about the details because it's a type of oyster farm that we've never heard of. It involves lots of hard structure and hanging baskets, over seven miles of stainless steel cable strung with tightly packed, potentially very heavy, oyster baskets that swing and hang there, very unnatural. I'm concerned about the public safety, about the safety of my family, myself, the children, friends, people in the area. I view this as a potential, maybe body catcher, death trap. I lose sleep worrying about the safety hazards of this. It's huge, it's over three and a half acres, so it's on an industrial scale. It would be on a large sandbar which is accessible to children. There are many children in the area, and I just, I think it's just terrible. And I wanted to make sure you're informed. Our hope is that you all would look into this and make a decision if you were for or against it. And if you're against it, please write a letter to the VMRC and let them know that as our representatives, that this is not right for this area. We are not against oyster farmers or oyster farmin', oyster business, but this kind of structure is dangerous. It's also unsightly on the business end. It may lower your property values, it may lower your desirability of living in this area. But I'm concerned mainly about the safety. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Greg Strater. I'm Sarah Stoneburner's husband. And thank you, first of all, for serving on the Board of Supervisors for Gloucester County. And thank you for this opportunity to speak. It's very meaningful, and I appreciate that. So I'm gonna go by notes. She was great with that talking. But I want to make sure I get all my points since I'm down to nine, two minutes and 45 seconds. But, so I have to express my concern and disapproval of the proposed industrial-scale oyster farm. We've researched the, what's posted on the VMRC site. We know what's there and everything. But this is on Horse Point Sandbar. And it is truly a sandbar, and it, very, very low tides. You're maybe ankle-deep in water here on the sandbar. There's a similar project to this on the Severn, at the mouth of the Severn River, just so you're aware of that. But that area is less residentially oriented and recreational-oriented. So there's a lot of recreational use of the water around where this proposed project is. And it's project number 23-0505. And so there's a lot of recreational use, boaters, fishermen, fisherwomen, jet skis, you know, kite surfing, all sorts of things. Chris Smith and Jared Lawson are the two applicants, and they are employees of Ward Oyster Company. And the application states that the cost for the project is $65,000. I question that, to be very candid. So the project consists of, as Sarah was saying, roughly seven miles of 5/16 steel cable, over 5,600 oyster cages, over 2,000 PVC pipes that will protrude, and they're cut, they're not rounded. They'll be sticking out of the water. And again, it's not, it's not something conducive to the water environment along the North River historically. So, you know, we've invested a lot of money in our house here, hundreds of thousands of dollars, to improve it, to improve the water line with breakwaters, with, you know, a tow piece on the edge that this group generously supported last year. And so, you know, I know the VMRC has the final vote on this matter, but your voice matters. And you are elected leaders in Gloucester County, and you will be heard. You will be listened to if you find yourself in a position to oppose this. I think there is economic challenge to Gloucester County. If a lot of this happens, it will, it will grow throughout the North River and the other rivers that make up the tributaries to Mob Jack Bay. And I know I'm over my time, but thank you for listening and we're happy to answer any questions or anything. But thank you, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Deanne Bristow. I thank you for the opportunity to be here to have a voice, that means a lot. And thank each and every one of you for your service to our wonderful community. I grew up here, my family has had a business here for a very long time. My concern is bringing to light what is happening with the quote-unquote Airbnb or rental market in my small community where we have had a family home since the 1940s. And pretty much everybody there, with the exception of a couple of people that have just moved, we have all been family-oriented places. And now, with, I guess, freedoms of you can do whatever you want to, and those are my questions to you all, they are available for rent. And they're available for rent advertising that 12-plus people are okay to stay in a three-bedroom house in a lane that's made of dirt and gravel that is maintained by the citizens that live there. So the reason that I stand before you is I feel that we have to have some parameters, and I don't know what they are, but I'm told that we don't have rules in Gloucester County about Airbnbs and short-term rentals. And this is something that I think that we are going to need to address because it is something that is happening around us. I have a business in Colonial Williamsburg, and I know, as a matter of fact, in Colonial Williamsburg itself, no Airbnbs are allowed. Not saying that I'm against them, but I feel like we need to discuss or figure out what the parameters are and what the rules are so that we can all do it in a way that it is beneficial to everybody. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Hastings, and I want to thank all of you for your service because I know sometimes it's a thankless job. I really am not prepared. I didn't come with any notes, but I felt it was incumbent upon me to step forward to speak about this industrial oyster farming permit. We are come-hers, but we've grown to love the community because the people here have great hearts, and there's a strong sense of community. And we advocate that. We are not in opposition to entrepreneurs or businesses with conscience that really do give goods and services. And that, so their services should be for the good of all and not for the good of few. I learned about this operation very inadvertently. Somebody just said, "Hey, did you hear about this?" And I said, "What?" It was a little notice, I guess they are required for the permit to post a notice in the newspaper, a small notice. But everyone I talked to in Ware Neck and even in other parts of the county had no idea about it. So that just raised a red flag for me. I feel that, yes, it does affect our property values. It affects the life on the river, the life of children and grandchildren, the boaters. I know that the boaters are very concerned about the navigational, navigational hazards. I'm very ignorant about this, but I'm trying to educate myself. I realize there's a lot of misinformation, disinformation, and a lot of studies that I question, but I, I'm still searching. I think that we have to be wise, we have to have a conscience with any business and any new endeavor. There's going to be ramifications with this for generations. I'll be gone. This will affect your children and your grandchildren. I am concerned about life in the river and life out of the river, all the creatures in there and those who live on land. I think that we need to pause and examine this because as I understand it, there hasn't been a lot of evaluation and there haven't been long-term studies. There are other options to creating a very lucrative business on the river. NOAA has some projects, and I have, I know that there are other projects. And there's such brilliance in this land, I'm sure somebody's gonna come up with another project that will be beneficial to all and not just a few. So I just, I'm asking you to use your conscience and be the good men and women that you are. Let us examine this with wisdom. I know those words are not very convenient for liturgical societies and things like that, but I think we need to use the words wisdom. We have to think about the wisdom. We have to think about the children. We're all gonna be gone. But what have we done to the river? We have many, many experiences, we have many examples of industry that has gone awry, and there's unintended consequences. Let's not be, let's not rush into something without examining these with the wisdom. Thank you for your time and thank you for your efforts, we really do appreciate it. And I'm just very grateful to be here, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and speak?
Hi, good evening. My name is Christopher Smith, and Jared Lawson and myself and our wives are the owners of Mob Jack Mariculture. And we are a nascent oyster and clam farm here in Gloucester and Matthews County. And as you've heard, we have submitted a joint application permit to the Army Corps of Engineers and the VMRC with the thought to install a long-line oyster farm. And I understand there have been concerns about the potential impacts this project may have on waterfront property owners in the vicinity. And so I'd just like to take this opportunity to kind of describe what we've applied for, tell a little bit us about ourselves, and just kind of put some details out there, I guess. Again, my name is Chris Smith. My family and I have lived in Virginia for the past 18 years and in Gloucester County here for the past 10 years. My partner, Jared Lawson, is a lifelong Virginia resident. His family has lived in Matthews County for eight years. Both Jared and I are employed, have been employed in shellfish aquaculture for the past 10 years. And those past 10 years, we've been involved in all aspects of the oyster business, hatchery production, field grow-out sales, operations management. We are both dedicated aquaculturalists. We have a passion for producing quality seafood. And we believe that oyster aquaculture is a win-win. It's a, you know, it's a high-quality food, domestically-produced, nutritious, delicious. And we are pursuing this joint permit application because we believe there is opportunity here in Gloucester County to produce premium-quality shellfish and also in the hopes of providing a better life for our families. So it sounds like the, a lot of the details have maybe been detailed already. But it is, like it was said earlier, there's, it's a, the project consists of approximately three acres. It measures 470 feet by 330 feet. It's 15 banks of three lines each. Each bank is supported on either end by a 12-inch piling. And then, the cable that is suspended is supported by inch-and-a-half riser posts. And that cable holds the oyster baskets out of the water at low tide. So at low tide, those oyster baskets are exposed for approximately an hour. As the tide rises, the baskets float, and then, as at high tide, the baskets are in fact submerged. There's a lot of reasons that this is, this is a good way to grow oysters, but basically, it minimizes labor and it produces a very high-quality product. The, you know, we've been going through the application process with the VMRC. It is fairly complicated, but we've been following their protocols and throughout the process and will continue to do that as we move forward. While I certainly understand the concerns people have, I do believe that there's several reasons why it will not impact property owners to the extent that they fear. The big one is, it is, it is a good long ways offshore. It's 1,500 feet off the beach at its closest edge, which is more than a quarter mile. You know, at that distance, you know, at low tide, you will be able to see it from the shore. But it's a good long ways off. It's certainly not gonna obscure anybody's view. The horizon will be, will still be visible. You know, it's someone's neighbor, a neighboring dock is gonna be much more visible than, say, the project that we have, we have applied for here. It is in shallow water, you know, so in terms of boating traffic, it's off of the channel going into Davis Creek.
I'm sure your time is up, could you sum up?
Yes, I believe that the, I guess I'd be happy to speak to people if they have questions, and I'd be happy to speak to the Board of Supervisors if they have further questions as well. So I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak during citizen comment period?
My name is Diane Jones, and I am in the Ware District. And this is, project is fairly close to my, where I live. And I guess what I'm hearing is another project that hasn't really been thought through as far as its effect on the community yet. I'm kind of citing the Sears Project, the gravel company that destroyed acres of people's wells. And also, I just hope that this is not another one of those that's gonna have long-term adverse effects to the community. I also would like to reiterate that you have a lot of projects coming, and all the planning commission seems to want to put high-density housing all up and down Route 17, which, of course, we all noticed that it's done a lot to the traffic in Gloucester County. And also, I'd like to mention that we have brilliant artists in this community. We have artists in the high school, if you saw their displays in the library. And at the high school, you would have to agree with me that there's a whole lot of artistic talent here. And you have accepted some sort of G with a couple of blue lines going across as our county symbol, which nobody was exposed to until it was accepted by the board as our county symbol. I don't remember any of the artists in the community submitting, or even being requested to submit, possible other, other options. And I would like you to, before you go changing everything to that G, which is kind of weird, I would like you to have submissions by the artists in the community for another symbol. If you don't like the Beehive, which was fine with everybody for a long time. And I would like you to start charging taxes to the companies that you've allowed to be here tax-free, like Walmart and other large companies that don't pay taxes, though ours are being raised. That's a bit of a grief to us. And I hope we don't have to change the sign to a life, a land of, a life worth living to Hampton North. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak during citizen comment period? Ms. Cronin, I know you said there were... Ms. Cronin, I know you said there were three.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. First from Larry Mikowski on Mariners Watch Lane. I'm opposed to the construction of the proposed commercial farming of oysters on the North River entrance to Davis Creek. It will be dangerous to enter Davis Creek and cause property values to decline. From fellow Lexick in Petsworth, I would like to provide the following comments regarding Agenda Item 11I, Discussion of Concerns Regarding Short-Term Residential Rentals. First, this is a long overdue item of concern to many residents of the county. In March of 2018, there were thirty-eight Airbnb's listed for rent in Gloucester County. Today, the internet states there are over a thousand. It is difficult to find any Airbnb safety or tax ordinances or regulations in the planning and zoning material on the Gloucester County website. The key issue in my mind is that Airbnb's are not consistent with the intent of any of the residential zoning districts in Gloucester County. Specifically, the Airbnb located in my SF1 neighborhood turns out to be party central when rented. Further, the county is not collecting the lodging and business revenue that is due as a result of unpaid, unpaid lodging tax, business property tax, and business licenses. I suggest that Airbnb's be restricted from residential zoning districts. And when permitted, they be required to pay the same taxes and have the same licensing requirements of any business in the county. From Paul Malcolm in Petsworth District, the discussion of short-term residential rentals is long overdue. I hope the review will include a complete briefing from planning and zoning on their actions related to the proliferation of these rentals in residential communities. Our experience in our small subdivision in the Harkam area is that planning and zoning has been less than helpful in trying to determine how a secondary homeowner in our, in our community, excuse me, could operate a short-term transient rental operation. This is not a bed and breakfast as defined by the code, but a commercial operation in a residential area. We hope existing codes will be reviewed and enforced or revised as necessary to preclude these operations. The increased traffic, party atmosphere with hot tub and fire pit are consistent with people enjoying their vacations, but are completely out of character with residents who have neighbors they have to live alongside of all year round. Those are the only comments, Mr. Chair.
Any last call? Anyone else like to speak during citizen comment period? Okay, we'll close citizen comment period. There's no public hearings, so next item we'll move to is a regular agenda, which is a discussion decision on current county calendar. We're going to talk about a few things. First, Mr. Crisco mentioned it to Ms. Steele about making July third a holiday for the county. That's first discussion about that and thoughts.
I just know a lot of, a lot of the businesses that employ our folks in the, employ our citizens are going to take that day. I will be shocked if the governor doesn't at some point come out and say that he's going to give the state employees a day off, that day off as well. I just think, you know, we, we've done so much for the employees, giving them an extra day at one of the most important holidays of the year. And the summertime, I think, just shows that we support our employees and want them to get to spend some time with their family because the work-life balance is very important to all of us. And then I think it's a, a good show by this board to beat the governor to the punch.
And by making the decision tonight, we give staff the opportunity to make decisions early. Dr. Worth?
Yeah, I think Mr. Crisco had a great suggestion and I would certainly support that. You know, we have some very dedicated employees in our county and giving them that extra day for a four-day weekend would be great. And I can tell you probably a lot of other places of business are going to do the same. I'm not, I know not everyone, but you know, we have some dedicated employees and we're trying to keep them happy here at the county. So I, I thank you, Mr. Crisco, for that good suggestion.
Mr. Hedrick.
Yes, likewise, I agree that that's a, an excellent suggestion. I'm just wondering, are we talking about every year?
No, just this year because it's a Monday.
Just this year, okay, thank you.
And maybe next year Friday because the fourth will be on a Thursday.
Correct. So, Mr. Chair, can we make a decision tonight?
That's what we're going to make tonight. The other item, since we're looking at the current calendar, taxes, do, do we want to move that as a board to the fifteenth? Okay. I know Ms. Thomas said it shouldn't be an issue.
May I, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
Are you talking about delaying the tax due date for personal property and real estate?
Yes.
From the fifth to the fifteenth?
Yes.
The thirtieth to the fifteenth.
Thirty.
For, excuse me. Thank you, I sit corrected. From June the thirtieth to July fifteenth?
Yes.
Well, then your due dates are, are in your code. And your code needs to be amended in order to delay the due dates. The due dates for first installment of real estate is June the thirtieth pursuant to Gloucester County Code sixteen dash sixty-one. And the first installment for realis, for personal property taxes is the same date, June, June the thirtieth pursuant to Gloucester County Code sixteen dash one oh one. Generally, in order to change an ordinance, well, you always have to pass an ordinance to change an ordinance or a code section. And you have to advertise once a week for two successive weeks. But if it's deemed an emergency, which this could be deemed an emergency because you don't have another meeting between now and June the thirtieth, you could pass the ordinance tonight to modify the due dates for the first installments of personal property and real estate taxes from June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-three to July fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. And at your next meeting, you could reaffirm that, that ordinance.
Mr. Wilmot, would it be possible to pass a resolution that no late fees are established until the fifteenth? That's an ordinance also.
Yes, sir.
I was just trying to work around. Dr. Worth?
We did this during some of the COVID period, right? We extended that.
And I believe we advertised.
Right, yeah, I know. But I think we were anticipating that, so.
Yeah, we, we knew going in that we were going to have a delay.
Right.
And I, I, I sent this email to my board because on May thirty-first, June first, when we got our briefing from the treasurer, I asked if they had gone out and they said they were going out the next day. And then I sent the email stating that we should look at this. My apologies for not copying you, Mr. Wilmot. Even though we would not have, wouldn't have changed what we're faced with here. I mean, I have a fellow board member who hasn't received his yet. And I'm sure there are some folks that are out-of-town property owners that haven't received theirs yet. You know, and I would like to, to take every measure possible that we have to ensure that these folks have the time. Because I, I wouldn't be pushing for this, but we had a reassessment. So some values have changed and people that don't have theirs coming out of escrow, they're going to be faced with paying a different amount. Some people will be less, they'll be happier. Some people, it's going to be more. And I, I don't know if twenty-eight days, twenty days is enough for them to, for everybody to make the change that they need to for this. The other thing is we had a different rate last year for personal property. It's come back up to two ninety-five. And you know, unlike your, your assessment, you don't get to see that number until it shows up in your tax bill. And there are people, I have heard from quite a number of people that, that are stating that, you know, last year was great, but they're still not understanding how their five, six, seven, eight-year-old car is worth more than what they paid for it, you know, when they purchased it brand-new. So I, I think we're going to have some other issues as far as personal property goes down the road, but maybe not tonight. But you know, unfortunately, we don't have that insight on the personal property like we do real estate. But I, I, I think if, if we have the ability to do something, that we probably should.
Mr. Chair, you, you do have that ability. You could deem it an emergency measure. You could make a motion and a second to pass an ordinance to delay the first installment due dates for personal property and real estate taxes from June the thirtieth to July fifteenth of twenty twenty-three. And then what we would do is we would advertise it and you would affirm it at your July meeting. So you could do that. Just this year, yes, sir.
Do you want to make the motion? Second. Okay. Ms. Steele, will you poll the board? Any more discussion on this? And this is, Ms. Steele, we, hold on, Mr. Banks. So seventeenth? You want, JJ?
Remind your motion.
Okay, now Ms. Steele.
Dr. Worth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is the head not good enough for July the third?
No, no.
Okay.
Hold on. One other item while we're on, adjusting the calendar around. It's been, I know two of us are not going to be, uh, two board members are not going to be here on the fifth. We'd looked at move, possibly moving the meeting to the twelfth, the eleventh, which is the following Tuesday. But we would not be, we, the county only has one encoder to put the video live and the school board has a meeting that night. So if we were to do, if we were to have a meeting the eleventh, it would not be live, aired live. It would be recorded and would be out the next day.
Why don't we just go to that Thursday? The sixth or the third?
Uh, planning commission has a meeting on the sixth. And they have the encoder. And we didn't get that extra box of cereal for the decoder. Sorry. I beat you, Ted.
You did.
So what is, what is y'all's thought on that? Dr. Worth?
Yeah, I think having it videoed, I mean, live is important because a lot of citizens watch and they, I, I know, I know it sounds crazy, but there are people watching the show, so I'd like to.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned. So, uh, you know, we could do it on the twelfth, July twelfth. You know, we don't have to have it on a Tuesday, so we don't.
But then, but the problem with the twelfth and moving off of our regular scheduled.
But this is a special situation.
Then we leave, either we leave it the fifth with two people absent. Or we move it to the eleventh and not have it, not have it played, but it was recorded.
What is the concern with moving it to the twelfth or the thirteenth if it would be recorded and shown on either of those dates?
It's just calendar issues, but Ms. Cronin?
The twelfth is the wetlands board and Chesapeake board. They're scheduled here in the Colonial Courthouse.
The nineteenth. I was thinking if you went to the third, we, that you always go, is it too late?
The thirteenth, the Colonial Courthouse is available.
What about the tenth?
The tenth is also available.
That's the Monday.
I just know that we typically meet the first, the first Tuesday. And if we can't, because of a holiday or an election, we always meet the next Wednesday. I understand there's a conflict, but it's two board members. And I, I, you know, I, I think for the dutiful thing is to, to be here as close to the scheduled date as possible.
That's right.
I, I think we're here to do the county's business. And if we can make a slight accommodation in an unusual circumstance so that we can still have the meeting, still broadcast it to the public, we should do it. And we should have our full seven members here rather than push forward as a matter of tradition for the sake of tradition.
Mr. Hedrick? Oh, I thought you.
Do we know if there's going to be any significant business that?
It very well could be some significant business depending upon what.
What happens here, yeah. I sense that we're going to be having significant business in July.
I, I would follow along with Mr. Gibson's premise that let's have it so they can broadcast it and see it, attend it, and that way everybody knows about it. So that, what's, it's, 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 we shouldn't hold it just because it's tradition this one time because of the calendar, the way the calendar falls. But that's, that's just how I feel and I agree with Mr. Gibson on that.
We, we've had other issues in the past where we knew coming into a meeting in the summer, we were going to be down two board members. I understand the concern. But again, you know, these, the, the folks that watch this and participate in this, they, they know the schedule as well as we do. And, you know, to, to, to go change, I know we're giving it a month notice, but I, I still think it's in our best interest to, to hold the meetings as close to our regular scheduled date as possible.
Mr. Chair, if I could, what was the date that we were looking at?
For which?
For the meeting, for the July fifth meeting.
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
That's a Wednesday. Well, what was the proposed, proposed date to change it?
Originally, we had, I talked to Ms. Cronin about moving it to the twelfth, the eleventh. I'll get it right before this is over with. I'm adding seven to the fifth, but it's the, since the fourth is on a Tuesday, moving it to the eleventh. The school board has their scheduled meeting on the eleventh. And we cannot be shown live.
We could record it.
We could record it.
I agree with that, but.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we could record, we could hold a meeting the tenth and record the meeting. We could hold a meeting the thirteenth and record the meeting. And tonight, we are, I'm sure, going to have a very lengthy discussion on the long-range planning, this potential bond referendum that is very unlikely to be resolved tonight. And it is important for all board members to weigh in on their positions. And so I don't understand the dedicated push to keep it the week before when not all members will be present. So, so I would urge the board to find, to place this meeting in July on the tenth or the thirteenth.
Ms. Cronin, as of right now, what is on the agenda for the meeting in July? I'm not worried about that. Other items?
We have a report on opioid funding. We have anticipated a s, update on the senior center before and after and an update from Mr. Thomas on the reassessment and a discussion by the board members on the, any future path there.
So, so why don't we just move it to the eighteenth, which is when our work session will be?
That's what I was, that's what I was getting at.
And then, and then we just.
Yeah, well.
Know what the schedule is.
Correct, understood. So right now, the, the July meeting is on the shorter side with the exception of reassessments. Well, this, but this is, this is something that's going to be important. And I think what we had talked about anyway was having a second meeting in July anyway. Mr. Wilmot, would you be back? The following Monday?
Yes, I think it's the week of the seventeenth. What day of the week is that?
Seventeenth is a Monday.
So it's the fifteenth through the twenty-second, I'll be away.
Okay. Ms. Steele?
If, if the board does decide to go with the, the week of the tenth, then if there still was a need for a second meeting, which even with everybody being here on that night, there still could be more information that you need or presentations or something like that that could be arranged for on your third Tuesday if necessary. Not to muddy the waters, but just throwing out another point.
Well, that's what, I mean, I was inclined to go back and have the meeting on the fifth and then the following, and then two weeks later. Because, but with the reassessments.
If we're going to add the meeting on the eighteenth, can't we just move the reassessments to the eighteenth? Or anything that's going to be a?
Before and after would be fine for the senior center and everything else. We could move all that to the eighteenth. And then?
Potential, potentially, we may have to schedule an emergency meeting anyway.
For him?
No, in August, if we decide to go down that road in order to give us the maximum amount of time to reach a decision on the information from Davenport.
All right, so let's, my thought is right now, we move it to the eighteenth?
One more suggestion. Do you want to go through the rest of the agenda tonight to see how far and where the discussion leads and then make the decision on the meeting? Because that might, you might know kind of where y'all stand.
We can, we can do that. And let, but let's.
Don't we don't forget?
We won't. I, I've got a note and Tricia's here, Ms. Cronin's here. She won't forget. So, um, next item, um. Day off. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
All right. Do we need a voice vote or what, Mr. Wilmot? Okay.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Or.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. So let's move to the next item and we'll come back to July meeting. Mr. Wilmot, it's an ordinance to amend to allow the use of golf carts and utility vehicles within the Riverwatch subdivision. Oh, George Baines, Mr. Baines. You tricked, you switched it on me.
No, sorry, I almost said, uh, our county attorney has the ordinance ready. So, um, the, the homeowners from, uh, the homeowner association came forward and asked for this ordinance. In doing it, we, uh, came to you and asked if we should move forward with this, you gave us the head nod to do it. Uh, I think our county attorney has the ordinance created tonight and he'll, uh, brief y'all on that. Thank you.
Very well done. Thank you, Mr. Chair. On page twenty-seven of your agenda packet is the ordinance of which Mr. Baines spoke. It's an ordinance amending Gloucester County Code, Chapter eighteen, Vehicles and Traffic, Article three, Golf Carts and Utility Vehicles, Section eighteen dash thirty-six, Designated Streets. And what that is in a long-winded way, way is, it's the designation of streets by a locality for permissive use of golf carts. Your code, Section eighteen dash thirty-six, uh, it limits those use to golf carts, not to utility vehicles. So what you have in front of you is on page twenty-seven and twenty-eight, is the addition of the Riverwatch subdivision as one of the three subdivisions in Gloucester County, which are allowed to be utilized for golf cart passage. It should be stressed that if, assuming you pass this, that there are rules attendant to that golf cart utilization. Uh, they, the drivers must have driver's licenses, uh, among other things. Uh, signage needs to be put up, uh, in the subdivision. So there are various restrictions, so it's not cart blanche or golf cart blanche. But you have that ordinance for your consideration.
Okay, there's an ordinance on page twenty-seven, Mr. Gibson.
Oh.
Go ahead and discuss it.
I was just going to voice my support for it, uh, on behalf of the good residents of the Riverwatch subdivision. Uh, so I would move the adoption of the ordinance.
I'll see.
Uh, Ms. Steele, will you pull the board?
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Or. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now, uh, Mr. Dawson, it's additional appropriation for public utilities.
I joked with staff today that I felt like Oliver coming here and please, sir, may I have more? Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Wilmot, Ms. Steele. Uh, we're here tonight to ask your approval of two resolutions. One is for additional appropriations to the FY twenty-three budget from our fu, the utility fund balance to pay for a major repair of a leaking, a failed water line at the intersection of Burley Road and George Washington Highway. This leak first surfaced back in October. We have been struggling to control this leak for several months. We've worked through permit issues with the, the Virginia Department of Transportation. Uh, this function is going to require closing the outside southbound lane of George Washington Highway as long as closing, as well as closing Burley Road to all traffic. We are going, we are required to have a traffic signal technician on the site the whole time this operation is going on to main, make sure the traffic signals operate properly. Uh, this water line is over seven feet deep, so it's a major excavation. We have traffic signal loops for the signalized intersection. We have a, you, a Dominion power pole that has to be braced, we have traffic signal poles that have to be braced. It is, and, uh, if we did not include inserting the two valves that we've added to the contract, one near the feed going across George Washington to Lowe's and the other one in Short Lane, where the second feed to Lowe's, uh, goes off of the, the water line in Short Lane, we would have to isolate all of the customers from Beehive Drive to KenHout Chevrolet and everybody on Short Lane would be out of water during this operation. But we are, we are spending the extra hundred and two thousand dollars to in, insert two valves, so we will limit the outage to only those customers between Beehive Drive and Short Lane or, and Burley Road. The second item is replacement of a, a variable frequency drive on the largest finished water pump at, in the water plant. Due to material delays, we are requesting this transfer occur in the fiscal twenty-four budget, uh, in the amount of six, of eighty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars. There is a six to eight week delay to get this variable frequency drive. We are, in the meantime, running this pump off of what's called a soft start. It's basically like a dimmer switch opposed to the more sophisticated variable frequency drive, but it does create operational issues for the, uh, for the plant operators as well as the, the chemical feed to treat the water. So I will be happy to answer any questions you have about these resolutions.
Any questions for Mr. Dawson? Okay, we have two ordinances, or two resolutions, one on page thirty-six.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
That's for three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for the road.
Correct.
Ms. Steele?
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Or. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we also have a resolution on page thirty-seven for the additional appropriations for fiscal year twenty-four.
Eighty-four, six forty-five.
Yes. Somebody wants to go home tonight. Ms. Steele, will you pull the board?
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Or.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
You get to go home, it's early tonight for you.
Sir?
It's early tonight for you, normally you're at the end.
I'm gonna be hanging around till the, till, till the bitter end, um, afraid.
Oh, that's right. That is so wrong. Next item on the agenda, I thought we were done with him.
No.
Gosh.
Okay, let's go to, uh, long range, no. Uh, next item on the agenda is appropriation for additional state funding due to an increase in ADM. Dr. Walter R. Clemmons.
Good evening, Mr. Hudson, Mr. Crisco, members of the board, Ms. Steele, Ms. Cronin, um, Mr. Wilmot. Thank you all for allowing us to be here this evening. And we're coming to you for, um, a request to, um, receive the seven hundred thousand dollar additional, um, as, um, flow through, really. Um, what we have is, as you all know, we build a budget each year and we find out in March how close we are to those actual numbers in terms of what our state funding will ultimately end up being. And this year, fortunately, um, our March thirty-first ADM came in higher, in which we were originally budgeted for. And so that higher number of students, which is roughly about a hundred and six students, resulted in an additional seven hundred thousand dollars, um, in which we started to see at the end of March flowing through. And so we come to you this evening to ask for that, um, additional flow-through fund, so it can be a part of our operating budget, which creates a great situation for us, because if you recall, this year, in the current year's budget, um, over what was allocated in last year's budget, you all had originally, um, approved a one point seven million dollar transfer to the, um, school division for the operating budget. But what was actually appropriated was one million. And when Ms. Steele and I talked about that seven hundred thousand dollar difference, um, she had a great idea, which was to maybe take that to use for some security upgrades that we were talking about, because we knew we were gonna be in, um, a position of looking for what we needed to do regarding security. And I said, well, we, we may have a win-win here, because if we were looking at the possible increase in student enrollment, then that may create a great situation for us. So if we get the increase in enrollment, then we wouldn't have to come back and ask you all for seven hundred thousand for the operating budget. We would take the increased enrollment and use that for the operating budget to help us continue to move forward. And then the one-time expenditure could go for the security. And so I think that puts us in a great situation as a follow-up from the last meeting, when you all appropriated the seven hundred thousand, which was the three hundred and seventy-nine to start for their door systems and then the three hundred and twenty, um, for, um, future use. And I think we're in a great situation right now, because whatever we would have in unspent funds will stay with the county. And what we're hoping is if we have a really good year and we have, um, you know, a significant amount of unspent appropriation, then that would help us go towards whatever upgrades we still need to do with the security once we all settle on, you know, where we wanna go with the, uh, weapons detection system. So that's why we're back, you know, this, um, evening and hopefully it'll be another win-win. Where we don't have to come back to you to ask you for any additional funding for security. Um, it could possibly be covered through whatever unspent appropriations we have in that request, so.
Any questions for Dr. Clemmons? There's a resolution on page thirty-nine.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Ms. Steele?
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Or.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Good, motion carries.
Thank you.
Dr. Clemmons, before you leave, or leave the podium, on behalf of the board of supervisors, I wanna congratulate you on your retirement. I hope you have a great time with your family, uh, done some great things for the county. You're gonna be missed, and, uh, enjoy.
Well, I appreciate it, and it's been a pleasure working with each and every one of you. Like I said, bittersweet moment, um, when you get to this point, um, because I really have enjoyed, um, the relationship over the past decade. And I think we're in an all-time great position right now, so it's tough to, to walk away from it. But, you know, family is important and I, I do need to spend some time there before that gets away from me, so.
Dr. Clemmons, did you bring your son here tonight?
I was.
Can we see him?
Come on, Walter. Doc, Rick?
And we're, we're gonna stay around a little bit too, 'cause I wanna hear the.
Rick. Rick, what I was getting ready to say is. From now on. Looks more like his mother. Thankfully.
I'm thankful, thank God.
But I would, I, I was getting ready to say, I hope the next superintendent Gloucester County has, we see a young kid grow up into a young man like him. I mean, you see him from kindergarten on.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, when we got here, he was actually in pre-k.
That's right.
And I think that the one benefit that that has provided, I've always said that I, whatever I would want for anybody else's child, I'd want for my own. And I think having a kid in the school system that you can see start from the earliest level all the way through.
So you're staying four years.
Don't put me on the spot on that one.
He just made the announcement.
But it's, it's been a blessing to have my child in, in the, in the school system. You know, Gloucester's a great school system, he's had some wonderful educators, and for them to help shape and mold him, um, it's been a blessing, um, for me. And it also allows me to have firsthand insight on, you know, what happens in the school system. And, you know, if there are things that need to be improved upon, then I, I, I know about it, because I'm living it as a parent. You know, it's one thing to be a superintendent, it's another thing to be the parent, um, of, and watching what happens. So we want what's best for all kids. And so Gloucester's been a blessing to our whole family and we appreciate it.
So how many times did you get called to the principal's office because of Walter?
Zero.
He, he knew better.
Yeah, he knew better, yeah, he knows, yeah. I appreciate you all.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Next item is long range planning for future capital needs, Ms. Steele and Ted Cold.
Ted slipped in without my seeing him and I was like, I hope he's here. Yes, it is. So, um, we were, uh, worked with Davenport in between meetings and really appreciate their ability to get the information out quickly, so that you could get it ahead of time and have some time to digest it. And, uh, I think, uh, sort of a good starting point is for him to review what was provided to you.
Okay, will do. I do have hard copies, if anybody needs one of those, if it looks like y'all have it. You do, okay. Oh, yeah. We paid for it. Okay, all right, they're coming around. And it's good, there are some things I'll reference by color, and I think, uh, it'll be helpful to have a, a color copy. But again, we're, we're following up on the last presentation we made last month. And, um, so I'll go through this, and there are page numbers in the lower right corner, I'll, I'll start on page two. And just thought this would be helpful, just to set the stage on the, the county's current tax-supported debt. So again, no utility debt is in here. Um, and you look here at the left-hand side, you can see it graphically, each bar is a fiscal year, starting with fiscal year twenty-four. All of the debt that's on the books today, and, and there's about fifty-seven point nine million dollars of debt outstanding, is paid off by twenty forty-three. It's all fixed rate, um, we know the payments to the penny. And we've broken it into three categories, the dark green being, um, the school debt that is eligible for the sales tax, uh, for the sales tax to be used to make the payment. That's the dark green, it's very level, year by year, at about two point two, two point three million a year. That's what we refer to as the eligible school debt. Uh, then we have other debt for schools that is not eligible for sales tax, that's about twenty-three million, that's the lighter green. And then we have the county debt, which is not eligible for the sales tax, that's the blue, it's about three and a half million. So in the aggregate, about fifty-seven point nine million. And you can see that it declines over time. If you go to page three, essentially all we've done is we've stripped out the eligible school debt. That's not really part of this discussion. What we're measuring and wanting to talk about is, um, what additional debt might the county be able to do over a five to ten-year period that is not associated with the sales tax? And, and what you'll see on the graph on page three on the left is we've got just the ineligible schools and the county. That's the existing debt. Um, in the budget that's, the fiscal year that's coming up, fiscal year twenty-four, the payment on those obligations will be about five point one nine million. That's that red line going across the page. And what we're gonna essentially measure is, as debt is paying down, how much more debt could you consider doing over that five to ten-year period and keep the payments below the red line? Right, and that's what may be the, the, the focus of a, of a potential bond referendum. So, um, we've got the actual debt outstanding, but we've also included the, uh, uh, the, the lease payments that you make to York County on the radio system, that's included in here. Okay, so that's sort of setting the stage for what we're going to discuss, very similar to our last presentation. When you go to page four, this will, um, you'll remember this slide, there are a few changes and I'll highlight those. But as you, as you look at this page four on the left-hand side, again, by fiscal year, columns A through G are the revenues that are identified for the debt repayment. And it's made up of column B, which is a local transfer to debt service, that's current year revenues of four point three million dollars a year. And we're assuming that you can make that available every year going forward, that's a big part of the assumption, that you don't, um, you know, you're able to continue to appropriate that amount each year. That's column B. Column C is, uh, interest credits that you get back on two pieces of debt you issued in twenty-eleven and twenty-twelve from the federal government. Those will end when that debt retires. So you are relying on the federal government for those revenues, but they are making those payments. Um, column D are some savings that you receive through the Virginia Public School Authority for a refunding. Those will also go away when the debt retires, but those are real savings that you are going to be credited each year. So B, C, and D are revenues that are, are known and in place today. So B, C, and D are revenues that are, are known and in place today. E is a placeholder. We're going to talk about that in some of our cases. We talk about potentially contributing an additional one penny of revenue to debt service or a potential two pennies. That's where that'll drop in. F is in Frank. There's been a change here. We, we kept the million five in 2024. That's made up of a $500,000 appropriation of fund balance for the first radio lease payment and a potential $1 million from the Gloucester Volunteer Fire and Rescue if that project moves forward. So that's the million five. You might remember, we had another 2.9 million in FY '27 from the potential sale of some fire department property. We've eliminated that because I think there was some conversation and discussion about that, about, you know, relying on that issuing debt now to rely on it later. And so we, we're going to look at that both ways. So that is a change from the last presentation.
Ted, if I can just, and especially for anybody from the fire departments who might be watching.
Sure.
What? We don't have to give the property up or some confusion on that? I think we, we, that, by removing it, when you look at those scenarios, it's more of a, a failsafe because we don't know exactly what year or how much, but the idea is that the land would still be sold and that there still would be additional revenue. Then the board could address how to use that. So that's why we have it both ways.
That's good, good clarification. Thank you. So column G is the revenues that are running through our model. H is the, the debt that's currently being paid that's not eligible for the sales tax. I is the, the payments to York County for the radio lease. Right now, we have no new debt rolling through here. J is empty, so K is the payments that you're obligated to make now. L is, we look at G, which is the revenues minus K, which are the payments. And right now, L is positive each year. And you'll remember from the last conversation that fiscal years '25 and '26 and '27 are sort of our limiting period. The, the annual surpluses are about $200,000. And so that, those years are what going to limit us on the front end as to how much new debt we might be able to issue if there is a referendum that's, that's approved. So, but column L is what we're, we're primarily going to look at to say, what level of debt will those dollars support over, again, a five to 10-year period, right? So if you look at page five, a couple of other things we wanted to make sure we covered going into the results. Again, looking over a longer-term period, the last time we presented this, we were solving for how much can you borrow in the spring of '24? Sort of a one-time event. What we've now done is we've solved for what amount of debt might you be able to issue over a five to 10-year period? So that is a fundamental difference. We have two scenarios. Scenario one is where we only have the revenues on the prior page that are available. And scenario two is where we assume we can get that two, or do get that 2.9 million in 2027. So the only difference between the scenarios is the 2.9 million from fire and rescue that we would get in 2027. So as, as Carol said, we look at it with and without. And then within that, we have three cases, A, B, and C. Case A is we only have the local transfer for debt available. That's that 4.3 million a year. Case B, we assume we could add the equivalent of one penny on the tax rate worth of revenue to the plan, beginning in '25. And then case C is the equivalent of two pennies, beginning in '25. And we've also simplified the debt assumptions. We've assumed 20 years at 5%. You might remember in the last presentation, we had four, five, five and a half. We did some capitalized interest and interest only. We've simplified this to a much more straightforward, or a more straightforward debt structure. At 20 years, 5%, we go right into paying principal and interest after the debt is issued. And then the results are on page six. I know there's a lot of numbers, but I think it'll make sense. You got, on the left-hand side, you got 1A, 1B, and 1C, right? So, so scenario one is the 2.9 million is not available, doesn't materialize. And 1A is, is just the baseline revenues of 4.3 million. You can see that as you go down 1A. And I'm going to go down 1A. The only, there's no new tax or additional tax revenue being considered in 1A. We are getting the $1 million upfront from the volunteer fire and rescue, still going down column 1A. What we then have solved for is what amount of debt can you issue by year through FY '33? So in FY '24, you'd be able to issue and support about 6.8 million. If you did that, you'd be on, on hold for a couple of years until some additional declines in your debt occur. And then you could do another 4.4 in '27, another 4.7 in '28. So in that 2024 to 2028 period, you would be able to issue about 15.9 million. And then you can issue again in '29, '31, and '33. The grand total over that 10-year period would be about 35.8 million. And so with a referendum, that's a more likely scenario. If you do have a referendum, if it is approved in the fall, you're not going to do it all at once. You've got to time projects. You've got to manage projects. And the referendum approval, you know, would be able to be used over time. And that's one of the changes we've looked at. Yes, sir?
The 2.9 million, what is the assessed value of the fire and rescue property? I mean, are we, are we, is this?
The 2.9 is the assessment, but they had an appraisal done that had it for worth a little bit more than that. So 2.9, by going with the assessment, was being conservative. I would hope that when that land is sold, that it is sold for more than 2.9.
Okay, so.
So that's assuming it's sold, right? I mean.
Well, in scenario one, it's not accounted for at all. It's like there is no money coming from that.
Doesn't exist. 1A, 1B, 1C, that 2.9 million is never accounted for.
So, and, and in reality, it would come in in some way, shape, or form and would be able to either allow you to pay off things sooner or do something else or whatever. But scenario one does not account for the 2.9 coming in.
That's right. So, you know, we covered 1A, that you can see the, the pace at which you, you might be able to issue some additional debt. What I will tell you, and this is true of every case, like for this example, under 1A, we show 6.8 million being issued in '24. If you don't do that, you don't lose it. You know, you, you, you could issue that in year two plus a little bit. So it's, it's, it's not a situation where if, if that issuance doesn't occur, the opportunity is gone. It carries forward. But there, you know, while you can do 35.8 million over the 10-year period, you can't do it all at once either. It's got to be spread out under that scenario. Same holds true for 1B and 1C. The only difference is we've pulled into those models another one penny worth of revenue or two pennies worth of revenue respectively in FY '25. We picked FY '25 because it's the next budget that you would work on following the referendum. So if you chose to develop a plan that included that concept, you would be able to communicate that to the voters. If it's approved, you'd be in a position to implement it in the next budget. And incrementally, it allows you to do more over those same periods of time as you would expect. And then 2A, B, and C, same exact setup, but we are assuming that that 2.9 is available in FY '27. And what you'll see is it allows you to do a little more a little sooner, but at the end of the 10-year period, each case supports the same amount of debt. It's just a question of how quickly you get there. So, you know, the, what's behind page six is a, is a detailed page for every scenario. I'm happy to go through those if there's a case in particular you have a question about. But felt like this maybe just gives you a little better perspective of, of some options and, and doesn't make an assumption that the 2.9 will materialize necessarily and better reflects the likely schedule of taking on these projects. It, it's unlikely it would all be done at one time. And so that was one of the updates we wanted to, Dr. To make.
Yes, Mr. Cold, thank you. This page six is phenomenal. Thank you very much for putting this together. It makes things very clear. So with 1A, would we need a referendum for 1A? Since we're not asking for any.
You, the, the, you don't technically need a referendum for any of it, right? You could go out and issue this amount of debt in non-voted debt, right? You go through your IDA or you go through VRA or VPSA. You don't have to ask the voters for approval to do any of this debt. Now, if you want to issue general obligation bonds backed by the full faith and credit of the county, you do have to go to referendum. So yes, you're right. We're, we're not showing a tax impact, but the referendum isn't about that. The referendum is getting the approval to issue a particular type of debt, GO debt, as opposed to, to lease financing, which you can do without a referendum.
Right, but looking at the projects that have been presented to us, all of those projects exceed the initial 6.8 million. So for example, the fire and rescue was 7.5 million, correct?
That was net. It's actually like 11 and a half. That was the net cost.
Right, right.
So in order to do just the one thing, you'd, you'd be looking at either having to go to the 1B or some other model. And if it's helpful at any point, the board can tell us and Trish can pull back up the other choices that were discussed at the last meeting too. So just to kind of have.
Mr. Crisco? I'd just like to keep my board aware too, when we're, when we're discussing this, that the value of that penny changes every time there's a reassessment. So while we're contemplating it being 582, even in 1A, if, if our next reassessment devalues our penny, we could be seeing a tax increase just to fund 1A regardless of whether or not we, we, we see those additional revenues.
Mr. Bizani?
So I'm going to make a comment overall about this whole spending issue is, you know, we have an economy that's, and I'm sure everybody would, I'm sure everybody would agree is uncertain. In talking to some of the economists at the university, they're telling me that we may face a deeper recession that we've all, that we've all anticipated because of the outstanding interest rate hikes that are being pursued by the Fed. Also, you know, the inflationary pressures caused by the interest rate hikes and the continuing, the continuing effect of supply chain issues. What I don't want to see is, and I don't want the public to have the perception that this board seemingly will look like a bunch of sailors on shore leave, can't wait to save, you know, spend their money. And so in my view, if we're looking at, there's some projects on page 56 of our board packet. The, the only project that I see that's viable and realistic is the Botantot renovation. Woodville Park, the Peach, the Sports Complex, the Bunk House, maybe even consider the, the fire station. Those are the only, maybe one or two projects that we may want to consider and leave the rest out until we see what happens with our economy. So that's, that's my view on all of this debt spending. I, I, I just don't want to have a bunch of money in my pocket. I just can't wait to spend. Which is the perception that I'm getting right now with this thing being foisted on us at this point in time. So those are my comments.
Mr. Gibson? I have a couple of questions. Thank you for your presentation. Just to look big picture, this issuance of bond obligations, is this is a common tool used by local governments throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia? Is that accurate?
Debt generally is. What type of debt varies by locality, whether it's, goes to referendum or not? So that, the, the referendum question varies, but issuing debt, many, many do use that as a way to fund capital, yes.
And in your experience, because this is something that this board hasn't done before, to my knowledge, is holding a referendum and getting some community consensus about the projects and about the incurring the debt? Has that been a helpful component in this process?
You know, from, from our perspective, if, if you want to build XYZ, whether you do voted debt or not, it's, we've got a lot of good options to fund that project, whatever it is. I think the referendum is more about a political decision about do we want community input on these projects and this debt? So we're sort of agnostic to it, whether or not you would go to a referendum. If, if you say, these are the projects we want to finance, there are ways to get most all of those projects financed without a referendum.
And, and just to be clear, this, this is not the county placing our funds into some high-risk investment crypto hedge funds. This is incurring debt that's going to fund capital projects. And according to your chart with this red line, if we are able to maintain that under, under that red line, we should, this should be a relatively, a risk that we could tolerate if we, if we meet the parameters that you, you've set forth here.
Yeah, and, and remember, I mean, you know, you all over the years, you've currently got almost $58 million of debt outstanding. So the debt concept is nothing new, right? Maybe going to a referendum to be able to issue general obligation bonds is new, but the issuance of debt is not a new concept. And that red line, I think, I think the, the key to all of this, whether you hold a referendum this year or next or you just issue debt that doesn't require a referendum, the key to this capacity is that you can appropriate that 4.3 million dollars every year. And, and to Mr. Crisco's point, how many pennies that requires to generate 4.3 million will vary depending on what your property values do. But, but what this model assumes is you can, you can appropriate 4.3 million dollars every year. And if you are comfortable doing that, then your ability to repay that debt is very solid. Now, are there operating costs that come along with some of these projects? Maybe. We're not accounting for those costs. This is just the cost of the capital, of the debt. So if there's staffing or other things that would accompany a project, that's got to be accounted for in your budget as well. But for the debt, under any of these cases, it's, it's being comfortable that you can continue to appropriate that 4.3 million or 4.3 million plus a penny, plus two pennies, whichever scenario you might decide to go with. But it would be, at that point in my opinion, a very solid repayment plan.
So, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Gibson. Our bond rating, what's our current bond rating for the county now, do you know?
Uh, the, the, I believe the bond rating has been withdrawn because the bonds that were rated are no longer outstanding. But you were a double A.
We were a double A at the time. Will this, will this create a bond rating if we incur this debt with the bonds that we may get voted in or?
As long as we pay it.
As, as we pay it, right.
No, it, to, you, you would not, even if you had, were to hold a referendum and then you say, we're ready to go ahead and issue some of this debt, does not mean you have to reestablish the bond rating. You could, you could issue the debt to a bank where you wouldn't be required to have a bond rating or through one of the state programs.
But the state programs are dependent on the bond rating, right? I mean, we could be, we could, we could be perceived as a risk to some investors buying into the bonds, right?
Well, every, every investor's going to do their own credit analysis, but, but going to the state, the Virginia Resources Authority or the Virginia Public School Authority, you do not need a bond rating. They do their own credit assessment and approve you without an outside rating.
Dr. Orth?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. So Mr. Bizani has expressed his concern being fiscally conservative. The board certainly in my years has been fiscally conservative in using taxpayers' funds. Having a crystal ball about where the economy is going, you know, all of us read, see different things based on access to different, you know, publications, journals, and stuff like that. From what I've seen in the last three, four years, the economists have gotten it wrong just about every step of the way. And I think we want to do the right thing for the county, but we also want to do the right thing for the citizens and the money that we are given the right to, to be. given the right to, to be very careful with. So just out of curiosity, what's your take on the, on the economy for the next year, two years? I mean, we've hear, we hear recession all the time. We hear, we know interest rates is going up. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'd just be curious.
I wonder if we can afford that advice from Mr. Cole.
I, I, well, it'll be a very short answer and that is, I, I really.
I don't know.
I don't know. And, and I've listened to enough, like you alluded, where there are some very smart people that spend every day looking at this and they don't agree.
That's right.
So who am I to?
I know, and that's what really.
Jump in that.
You know, I try to be, you know, we're all very fiscally conservative with our own budgets. We watch very carefully every penny. You know, the county has to balance its budget. We can't overspend like the federal government. You know, we want to be very careful with that. And I think we want to do the right thing with regard to this. We have some projects that, you know, we could accomplish that we hadn't seen in a long time. On the other hand, you know, is this the right time to do something like that? I, I, I balance all that with how I think we should be acting for the citizens as well as, you know, things that, thinking of the future of the citizens, the county. Some of the things we are thinking of doing are things that will benefit our children, our county, the schools, the fire and rescue, which is so crucial to this county. I mean, we know what the benefits of that fire and rescue squad are to this county as volunteers. We know what it would cost if we had to go to a fully paid. So I think we try to do the very best for as many people as we can, the same time trying to be very fiscally conservative with, with the citizens' money.
Mr. Chair. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, also, if, if we did a referendum, a- and I hear Mr. Bazzani, what you're saying, but if we did a referendum, it would be community input. It would be the citizens that are making the decision, what they want to see in their county. It wouldn't just be a board's decision. It would be a referendum with, like, for instance, the school's sales tax. The citizens decided what they wanted. So I, I don't have a problem with a referendum and letting the citizens decide this.
Mr. Gibson. Thank you. Um, I, I would just, uh, as far as my opinion on this, I'm going to get a little philosophical here. And I, I appreciate Mr. Bazzani and Mr. Crisco. They're always mindful of the economic conditions and we, we've got to. You have to be. You have to be diligent. You have to be aware of the current economic conditions and where we're headed. Uh, but I think really this entire decision comes down to, are we going to move forward with optimism and hope and confidence? Or we are going to move forward in fear? And, and when I look at the history of our country, every great project that we have undertaken, that we have succeeded in has been the product of optimism and hope. And I think it's fitting. And in no way does our very small decision here tonight compare to what the brave men did on June 6, 1944. But without that hope and that optimism, we wouldn't have dropped those paratroopers from the sky and landed on the beaches of Normandy. And in a much smaller microcosm of this, I think we have an opportunity to move our community forward with hope and with optimism. But if we, if we dig into our fears and say, we'll never sell that fire station for 2.9 million, let's just hold back, then we're not going to move the county forward. And we've got an opportunity to believe that in faith that right now the main street is thriving. Property values are up. Unemployment is down. Our population is growing. There's no reason to think that, that that property is not going to sell for a reasonable amount of money. And what that would do under scenario two is permit us to take on, uh, some more debt more quickly in a reasonable fashion that would enable us to build that fire station quickly and maybe add a project or two more quickly. Whereas if we're in scenario one, we're really just plodding along. Uh, and, and the other constant that I see in this whole analysis is there's only one direction costs are going to go from today. And that is up, up. And so we can kick this down the road. We can kick it down five years, 10 years after we're off the board. And we're still going to have needs for a fire station. We're still going to have education needs. We're still going to have recreation needs. We, we need to make these decisions now and move forward with, with confidence because I, 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 these costs are just going to go up and these needs are going to remain. So I, I just encourage the board to really think about, uh, moving forward in faith that we can do this. And I also agree that we should put it before the voters because I think that there needs to be a consensus among the community that these are projects are worthwhile and that we should take them on.
Mr. Bazzani. So one of the things you learn in business school is you have to be able to assist, uh, assess risk. Risk assessment is, is key to moving anything forward. How much risk are we facing? Uh, there are many risks that are known. There are many risks that are unknown. I'm on, I'm on the side of what probably 60% unknown, 40% known risk. And so for me, um, the prudent thing to do would be to take each project and look at it carefully and not just, as I said before, like a bunch of sailors on, going on shore leave with a bunch of money in their pocket. To assess each project carefully. And I don't have a problem with, with a referendum, absolutely. The, the citizens, it's, it's a great way for the citizens to determine it. But we do a referendum, we have to give them the risks associated with that in terms of what's it going to cost them out of pocket to say, yes, I want to do this. Right? We have to give them that, those numbers and tell them, if you want this, this is what it's going to cost you. And full disclosure on everything. So that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Cole. I know you said if we do government obligation bonds, it's 5% right now. That's what you used in your model. That's what we've used. Right now, it's probably, um, 375 for 20 years. But we're also talking about a pure issuing debt over some number of years. So we used five to be conservative in a planning. Realistically, it could be a lower number or a higher number. The interest rate could be lower, which means you could afford more for the same dollars. Yes. Okay, that's what I was thinking. Um, the other thing is, I think that we're looking at the modified list, the needs list, as what's set in stone. I'm looking at this as needs that, the items that need to be looked at. And we use that as a foundation and not spend anything today, tomorrow, next, without going over it. I mean, we haven't spent money on anything that we haven't thoroughly evaluated. So just because it's on this list, doesn't mean that that's one of the items that's going to be spent right away. We might come up and look at something else and say it's a different item. I know since, uh, Dr. Orth and Mr. Crisco and myself have been on here, if you look at the, I think it's off now finally, but the Capitol, um, CIP, the senior centers, senior cities, senior center has been on there the whole time. And it's something that's never been looked at. And it's, just keeps going further and further down the road. Yeah, I thought it was off. I haven't seen it in forever. But, um, I know for the longest time it was there and it was there before we got on the board. And, and I look, what I see this as, is an opportunity because I know I wasn't fortunate enough and I don't know how many people in this room are or in the county were fortunate enough to buy a house and pay cash for it. What I see is this is an ability for us to have the fire station, have the bunk out, and just using the list that's here, the sports complex, whatever else, have it now, be able to utilize it and enjoy it while we're paying for it in the future. Because if we are sat there and look at it from the point of view that we've got to wait and pay cash for it when we get it, we'll never enjoy it. We'll never have the ability to do it. That's the problem I see with any putting this off at all. It's basically a mortgage on our house that we're living in now, but still paying for.
Mr. Hedrick.
The only thing I want to add at this point is that this is a rather long li- list that we have. And, and as I reflect on that, it's, why is this list so long? Why isn't this a shorter list? And it's because we have maybe kicked enough stuff down the road too many times. Not that we shouldn't maybe go back and, and, and make certain that this is the, every one of these are a, a, a good priority. But it's certainly a good place to start with this list. And I, I'm just, uh, I wish it were a shorter list.
Any more thoughts, questions, comments?
So what will the next steps be? I mean, we need to, as a board, make a decision sometime between now and the August time period, correct? So we have the right number of days if the board wants to give this, the citizens an opportunity to provide input to this.
I think the, I think the first thing that we need to look at is page six. And see what level people are comfortable with. Are they better with, I mean, you're looking at a difference between 36,000 and 50,000. I don't know, I don't know. Excuse me? I mean, 36 million and 50 million. Not 1,000. I'm being optimistic. But, um, you know, it's funny, I, even Mr. Cole, when he gave the numbers, he rounded down when I thought he should have rounded up and he rounded up when he should have rounded down. I mean, you know, you're looking at numbers that are staying basically the same. And then if you go to, and personally, I'm not sure we should include the 2.9 in our decision-making process. Because all that does, all that does is moves up the debt issuance. So if we were to get that in a couple of years, guess what? We move it up. Then we, what?
What's, my, my concern is do we actually get it? Because what if it's someone that comes in and they, they need us to partner with them and we don't get the full 2.9 million? That's, that's another concern with, with including it. That's.
Right, but I think we need to look at 1A, B, or C and not have the 2.9 million. Because all that does is we issue debt further. We may come up, whatever. If we don't use that in there, so my opinion, a decision needs to be made is either 1A, B, or C. Because at the end, it's all the same numbers.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I have to respectfully disagree that the key distinction between section one and section two is the speed at which these projects can be completed. And so if you omit the 2.9, then you are delaying projects significantly for many years if you assume that the 2.9 is not included in these numbers. That's the key distinction. And so I, I would not, uh, dismiss, uh, option 2A, B, or C.
But if we get that 2.9 million, then we can immediately put that to a different, one of the projects that it will completely fund to.
I, I, I think, Ken, Mr. Gibson, I think where I look at it as, do we leave it at no additional revenues, the 1 cent or the 2 cent? That's why I'm saying keep it at 1A, B, and C. Because you're absolutely right. It would delay it. But if it's not sold in 25 and it's not, or 26.
Seven.
27. If it's not sold in 27, then it would move it to 28. So, but if we have it as listed as 1A, B, or C, then we know that we can do one of those. Once we get to 2.9 million, we can move that up.
But you've got a $6 million difference between 1A and 2A. And that's, that's where the 2.9 comes into play. 15, 985 versus 21, 690. That's a significant difference if you subtract the 2.9.
Well, yeah, I agree with you, but my only concern is, is when it would sell. Because we have to wait, we're not going to get it until the new fire station is built. And then it would have to be readily marketed and sold almost immediately.
Yeah, and the risk, Mr. Chair. The risk you would take is if you, if you consider the 2.9 million in the, in the, the model, and that, and that 2, 2.9 million does not come to fruition right away, you're talking tax increases then to make up the difference. That's what's going to happen. That's the risk, because I like to assess risk. That's the risk you're taking. Are we going to subject our citizens to countless tax increases to make up something that we didn't anticipate before? As opposed to knowing what we have ahead of us, at least a cer- some certainty that, uh, going forward, we know what the revenues might be. As opposed to hoping and praying that we're going to get 2.9 million dollars. And if it doesn't come to fruition, then you're looking at the taxpayer to make up the difference, which is unconscionable in my view.
I mean, we, we're, the, the taxpayers are going to make up a difference one way or the other. That's what I'm saying. If you use, but no additional revenue, the 1 cent or the 2 cent, there's, it's going to be something. And I mean, to sit, to, to sit there and say that you're raising taxes on the citizens, that's true. But they're also getting a benefit from the increase of taxes.
You're assuming that you're going to have the 2.9 million dollars in your pocket, which we don't know yet, right? The, 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 the sale, the increases in taxes assumes in addition that, that we have the 2.9 million dollars sold.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on, I mean, no, hold on just a second, Mr. Gibson. It's, it's looking at, you're looking at, if you go back to page two or three, page five. Five. If you go back to page five, you've got two scenarios and two, three cases. The two scenarios are you don't have the, um, you don't have the 2.9 million or you do have the 2.9 million. That's where it becomes one and two. And then if you go to A, B, or C, that's no increase. B is, uh, um, 1 cent, 1 cent increase and C is a 2 cent increase. So I was, that's where I was getting at if, and I agree with Mr. Gibson, if we move, don't use it, it pushes it down the line. But at the end of the day, the numbers are equal between 1A and 2A.
That's right.
1B and 2B. It just changes when you can, um, issue the debt. As Mr. Gibson was saying. Mr. Hedrick.
And if, if we get the 2.9 million, we can move, we can utilize it to move things up. So. It's, it's better to go into it anticipating that we won't get it.
Hold on, Mr. Gibson first.
Oh, God, I'm sorry.
But, but the factor that I believe you're missing is that the, the longer you delay these projects, the higher the cost. And so under 2A, with the anticipated sale of two, of the, of the property at 2.9 million, you are enabled, you are enabled to, uh, take on 20, almost 22 million dollars in projects more quickly. Therefore, the, the value of that money is higher. And we've seen in so many different examples with the baseball field at Page Middle School, when it was built, it was going to cost 200,000. When we finally built it, it was almost 600,000. Everything goes up, up, up. And so if we can select a scenario that will permit us to perform more proj- projects more quickly, that's fiscal conservatism, not kicking it down the road.
Mr. Hedrick.
We're saying the same thing. I completely agree with what you're saying. It's just if we don't anticipate getting the 2.9 million and we do get it, we will go to the, uh, 2A, 2B, or 2C.
Go ahead, Dr. Or.
So I think that regardless of the, whatever decision we make, it all starts with the fire and rescue squad. Because they got to get the building built first before we even have access to the other building. So if we approved, let's say the citizens approve, let's say the referendum for 1B, which is what we're all talking about, either 1A, B, or C, let's say 1B. And the fire department, they, I assume they have their plans ready to roll. But how many years it will take to get from start to finish and then move out of the building and then put it on the market, we don't know. I agree that, yeah, optimism is important, but realism is, you know, first getting a referendum to get the money, having the citizens approve it if we engage the citizens. And then, okay, the fire department knows where they're going to go. They have to go out and bid and get the thing built and it, you know, it could be several years before we even know what we can do with that building. So I can see us, I mean, I think for where I stand, again, we've talked about letting the citizens input, provide input. A 1B scenario would be appropriate because it wouldn't burden them except for about a penny.
I, I think where as a board, regardless of the 2.9 million, with or without it, we as a board need to go back and evaluate whether we want it to be no additional revenues, a 1 cent increase or a 2 cent increase. I think that is the first step to determine where we want to go. And hopefully, I mean, hopefully we can get it at 3 and 1/2 percent and we can get 6 million for the property. So I mean, if, I know we're using 2.9 because that's the assessment. But we just need to determine as a, in my opinion, as a board, and Mr. Cole, correct me if I'm wrong, where, and I doubt I am, but where we need to start is the, the levels that we want to have the borrowing capacity. The levels that we wanna have the borrowing capacity by twenty thirty-three, whether we wanna have the thirty-five eight, the forty-three one, or the fifty.
Yeah, and I think there was a discuss, I mean, you're getting into some of the, what are the next steps and the deadlines for a potential referendum? And, you know, what parameters do you need to establish and when? Because there are some very specific laws around. You know, what questions? Get asked of the voters, what projects you bundle into a question by category. Um, you can be more specific in the question or less specific. And then you have to communicate that to the voters. And so I, I would just say that. You've got a CIP and that might be the basis of these are the projects we wanna fund, but. An approved referendum, and then you go four years down the road, you got a whole different board, they may decide to do something totally different. With those, they may not issue the bonds, right? Just because you have a referendum doesn't mean you have to issue it. But they might choose to. Fund different projects, as long as they fit within the confines of what the voters were asked.
You bring up a good point. This board's gonna change after November of this year.
Right, that's right, and, and again, you, you, when you ask the voters for approval of a referendum. You, you will be making some decisions about how many different questions do you wanna ask them? Public safety versus parks and rec versus transportation, for example, or schools. And then how specific are you getting within those questions? Very broad, so that down the road, you have flexibility to move projects in those categories? Or you're getting very specific such that? That's the project you've gotta fund? I mean, those are decisions y'all are gonna have to make if you decide to move forward with the referendum process and um. I think the other thing to just keep in mind is. If you need a fire station. But the referendum is not approved, it's, becomes very, very difficult to fund a fire station with debt politically. I just, you gotta think about that, right? How is this all bundled together between gotta-have projects versus wanna-have projects? And if a referendum isn't approved. You're going to be in a position where you've gotta make a decision about doing something anyhow or foregoing a need.
So gentlemen, I'll, I'll leave you with this, because looking at this list, I, I see station one is probably our biggest glaring deficiency at the moment. And I know that the net county expense is seven point one. I, I can see right here that item one A allows us about six point nine million dollars. Um, next year alone. And I know that's not enough because that's the net. But it gets us very close to that net county expense. And. You know, I understand that referendums, you know, we get people involved, we get people engaged. Um, it's a great asset for us to, to do that. But at the end of the day. Fiscal, fiscally. You know. There are a lot of variables that the seven of us don't get to control. One is the interest rates. One is uh our reassessments, because with the value of the penny, there's a bunch of different numbers that go in here. Um, you know, I, 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 I really struggle with the two point nine, I know it's an assessed value. The issue comes back to someone comes into the county wanting to make an investment, they're gonna look for the county to be a partner with them in that investment. And, you know, it's, 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 it's how these things get done. I doubt that that building will be sold and someone will wanna come in and buy it. And I know it's probably three or four different parcels that we have, but, but you would, or the fire department has. But they would wanna buy it and, and then do all these renovations, you know. Two point nine million dollars is going to really undercut their ability to do all the renovations that they'd wanna do. Um, so I, me personally, I, I'm looking at this and you may say it's kicking the can down the road, but I, I'm, I'm looking at it as trying to. Be mindful of every dollar and cent that we have, that we're going to have, and the people in this county are going to have. I, I don't think that a referendum this year is necessarily the best course of action. Because we have several projects, just to list it on fifty-six, we have thirty million dollars worth of projects. That. Could go to forty million dollars of project, worth of projects. In the next year, just based on if the inflationary pressures stay where they are. We haven't seen a reduction much of inflation since COVID started that's really been meaningful. So that, that's where I'm concerned and I, honestly, I, I, I think we have to look at this during budget cycle of next year. See if anything is improved, see what our assessment has done, and then issue it for the referendum for the following year. The other reason is, the following year is a presidential election, we'll have a whole lot more citizenry out at the polls than we will in twenty-three.
And, and we'll have a new complexion board, and this will give us time to see what's, looks, a look ahead as to what's gonna happen to us. Because the Fed's gonna keep on raising uh interest rates twenty-five, twenty-five basis points every quarter. And when's that gonna stop? When's that gonna stop? It's gonna probably stop when we see a new administration uh in the federal government, so. That's a concern that I have as well, so I agree with Mr. Crisco, we should probably wait till the next budget cycle, see where we are. The number one probably, the number one priority right now, I think, would be the fire station and give those good folks, you know, the opportunity to build their, their station. The other projects are more wants than they are needs. The Botantot School, I think, is a very important need, so after the fire station, we should consider renovating the Botantot School. That, for me, tax increases should benefit the many and not just the few. Woodville benefits the few, in my view. The parks benefit the few, because not everybody, not thirty, all thirty-eight thousand folks go to the parks. So. The fire station, Botantot School, those are two important projects that we should pursue. But we should, we should just wait and see, and I'm not saying kick the can down there, because that's not what we're doing. But we should wait to see after the complexion of the board has changed in November, and then next bu, next budget cycle, we should then reevaluate our capital needs.
Well. I mean, if we're gonna look, truly look at items that affect the many, if we go back to that list. If I can find it, hold on. Can you see it? Um. I think it's still thirty-four, thirty-five percent of the households or the property owners in the county have school-aged children.
Correct.
So. Batata, although one of the largest schools in the county. Why are we gonna re, um, renovate? Batata, because it's only thirty-four percent. Of the, all the property owners have school-aged kids. And that's just a small elementary school, so why are we gonna renovate that? No, I'm asking a question.
And, and Mr. Chair, if I may.
And.
Go ahead.
I would like an answer. I mean, I don't understand why, if, if we wanna do it for everybody, why are we gonna do that school? I mean, I understand going to high school, because all the kids go through the high school.
For the same reason we did for the high school, right?
No, oh, no.
Everybody goes to Botantot.
No, they don't.
Thirty-five percent of them do.
No, they don't.
A fraction of that thirty-five percent.
A fraction of the thirty-five percent. But my point is. We need to do it for the schools, we need to do it for all the citizens. You might not deal with Woodville Park or some of the other facilities that are on here. But other people do, and it might not be the people that each of us deal with on a regular basis. But a lot of people deal with these things. And for us to sit there and say, we can't, don't wanna add to Woodville Park, A, because it doesn't affect me? That's the wrong way of thinking. It's the majority of the citizens are gonna utilize it. We're gonna do the schools because that's what's best for the students in the schools. We're gonna renovate their school age, um, age wax. The sports complex. If you look at it that way, it's for the good of the whole county. But don't just sit there and say, because I don't go to Woodville, that it's not, we don't need to renovate it, because there's a, um, add the different items to it. Because there are tremendous amount of people in this county that do use the parks and rec. Just because we don't, doesn't mean others don't. That's all I'm saying on that. Dr. Orth, or Mr. Gibson? No, he didn't, he was pointing to you.
I agree, we, we need to handle this decision responsibly, and we, we need to ensure that we can move forward in a responsible way. I would clarify that under one A and one, and two A involves no tax increase. You, you keep mentioning there's a tax increase, there are two very viable options that, that involve no tax increase. I hear the phrase, and I've heard the phrase for fifteen years, wants versus needs. And what I, what I get frustrated when I hear that is, what we do in here has real life consequences. And when it sounds, it's a good soundbite, but in reality, it has a real effect. Because I heard that same phrase back in two thousand eleven, when we were talking about the construction of Page Middle School. And I heard that a bigger gym was a want, not a need. And my daughter is going to a graduation ceremony at Page Middle School this Friday, I believe. I will be there. Because we have no full auditorium at that school, we have to do three different shifts of parents and friends and family. The, the, the eighth grade class and their friends and family cannot all have one ceremony. So imagine the, just the logistical nightmare that is. The sports teams can't play sports in the gym, because that was a want, not a need. They have to be bussed over to Peaslee Middle School. This has real world consequences, and so we can kick this down the road. But to say that these projects don't affect the community, I can't understand it. The fire station will serve the entire community, public safety, the schools. Uh, we have a great need for improved recreational facilities. So all of these projects are important, and yeah, we can kick them down the road, and we can say this bad thing's gonna happen and that bad thing's gonna happen, but. I just, between now and our next meeting, I'd really like you to think about, all of us to think about. Whether we're willing to take the next step to try to address these critical needs. And, and let's take ownership of these things instead of leaving it for a future board. Thank you.
Any other thoughts, comments?
Won't share personal opinion, I just wanna talk on next steps, that I had suggested um, that if the board wanted to move forward, you might want to. Um, hear from different groups. So I've been telling both fire departments to be ready if. There were questions for them to come in and talk about their projects, that's no promise, and maybe you don't wanna go there. But I just, you know. We've been doing work on looking at some of the park CIP things, so we could have better figures. So if the board wants to hear more. That is a possibility of a next step. I, I understand the idea of having a total amount, but I'm just thinking on the timeframe of getting to the point. Of what is that referendum gonna say?
I think that's gonna be. The second July meeting.
Okay.
Personally. Uh, the other thing I would like, if you could send us an email, and I don't think that would be you, Mr. Cole. I think that would be staff. Um, this is net county expense. That's taken into the million dollars from. The um, county plus the two point nine.
It's eleven million minus three point nine. Which is the one million cash upfront and the two point nine in sales.
So. That's what I, that's what I thought it was.
Yeah.
So, you know, you're looking at the scenario one A. We can't do, if we look at just truly one A. We wouldn't be able to do the fire department until twenty-eight.
That's right.
So, well, we could possibly do it in twenty-seven.
The one million is already added in there on line eight.
So we could do it in twenty-seven.
Um. Yes.
What's that?
That's a, that's a lot of if, ands, and buts right there, because. That's, that's, that's the. If it sells for the two point nine, that's if we can even get that property. If, that's even if we can get it built. Let me finish. If, if you're looking at that and you're looking at twenty-eight, I mean, if, if we get the two point nine, you, you've got. Uh, nine million and thirteen million and twenty-four, and then in twenty-six. And that's if. That's twenty-one, seven. By fiscal year twenty-eight is what you're saying you're wanting to build this for, which is, that's fine, two A is fine with me. Honestly, I think that's a stretch to complete. A new firehouse that I know they have plans for, but there's no work been done down, down at that site yet to start the construction. To get it completed, I, I, I don't see how, I mean, if they were, if, 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 if the money tree fell through the ceiling tonight, and we had twenty-two million dollars sitting here in front of us tonight. I'm not sure that by twenty-eight, we would have a building built. Procured and that one sold. By twenty-eight.
Okay. If we go back to one A, which I was talking about, and you get the six point eight million plus the four point four million. And we go with the um, eleven million that it currently costs. That's what you would have to work off of.
Sure.
So that has nothing to do with the numbers you were just talking about, because it's the six point eight plus the four point four two. That's the earliest we would be able to afford the, um, fire station.
Right, and.
That's why, that's not much of an option.
That's why we're saying one A is not an option.
All I'm saying though is, is, is two A then doesn't become an option, because if you have nine million dollars. In twenty-four, that assumes that two point nine million dollars comes in twenty-four.
Correct.
So I.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, okay, great, I, I still think that's, that's a. That's, that's aggressive.
Just from the contractor standpoint, and who knows about equipment and timing and competition, but just so you know, that we were told eighteen months to twenty-four months. Start to finish to build the building.
But the only, the only point I'm trying to make is. Is that if we use one A. One B or one C, we're taking out the two point nine million. So that moves the number to ten million dollars. Stays at eleven million, but we're getting a million from the fire department. So we would not be able, we could afford it, one B, we could afford it the first year. One C, we could afford it the first year. We couldn't afford it.
We, we don't know that either, though.
How do we not?
Yeah, we do.
No, we don't. Because you're, 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 you, everybody's. It, it just explicitly not looking at column one B, row four, column one B, row four. The value of that penny. So what happens next year when that penny goes to? Four twenty.
Okay, if it goes to four twenty, we're still fourteen million minus four twenty.
It's different.
We're adding a penny to it. Which is four twenty.
So it'd be.
Different four twenty and five eighty-two.
It's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on, yes, go ahead.
I think it, yeah, there's a lot of numbers here, this has clarified for me a lot of. Unknows. There's still a lot of unknowns. I think the next step that this board has to make is to decide as a board, are we gonna do the referendum this year or hold off? I think we could give it another month for all these numbers to sit in, sit tight, and then in July, I think the board needs to decide. Are we gonna do a referendum or not, and is it gonna be one A, B, or C?
Mr. Hedrick.
I think instead, instead of saying one cent or two cents, we need to. Say an amount. So we understand that we're dealing with, what is it, five hundred and some thousand dollars when we say one cent? Instead of saying one cent or two cents, say five hundred, however many thousand dollars we're going to need. To, to affect this project.
So. That, that's, that's there, that, that number is five hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Right.
So whether that's turns into be one cents, one and a half cents, or three cents, or seven cents.
Right.
That is our number, is the five eighty-two, one twenty-seven.
Right.
And that's what is, is, is concerning me is because that number changes with every assess, and it. Which, which is a, a number that the seven of us don't have the ability to control. That's all that I'm saying.
Okay, the only point. And I'm gonna try to make it again, hopefully successfully. Is if we go one A, we can't afford a fire department. Because we'd need ten million dollars, we couldn't afford it till twenty-seven.
Okay?
That's what I was trying to say earlier. If we go one B, we could afford it the first year and have extra money left over. If we go one C, we can afford it the first year. If we go one C, we can afford it the first year and have money. And I understand that what this five point, five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars is, is that's how much extra we would, it's not actual, um, loan amount. It's how much interest that we can pay on the loan.
Correct.
So all, the, the, the whole issue is, is how much do we want to afford? And which item, which way do we wanna go? One A or, do we wanna go A, B, or C? Which is no, no increase, a one cent increase or two cent increase on today's number at five hundred and eighty-two thousand or one, um, one point six.
Want that decision tonight?
No.
Okay. Right.
That's what we're looking at. That's the decision we have to make as a board. Would you agree with that, Mr. Cole?
I think that's a good place to start.
So we got one answer out of him. He wouldn't tell us what the, the economy's gonna do, but we've got that. Any, Mr. Gibson.
One more point on, uh, two A. I, I, I know I'm being insistent on this, but if we were to do two A with zero tax increase, we would have twenty, almost twenty-two million dollars. And I, I just wanna remind the board that with the cash reserves that we had this year, we were over six million over sort of that danger zone. And we dipped into it a bit to pay for a few items and so we, we have a cushion, uh, there. And we would hopefully have that cushion, particularly when you factor in the fact that we are going, we have a very valuable piece of property on Main Street that we will be able to sell once we commit to the building of the fire station. So, uh, please give some thought to two A with zero tax increase with the, with the belief that this is a viable piece of property that we can sell.
I think personally, I'd look at it, Mr. Cole must us up. I think it should have been A, B, or C. The zero percent increase, one or two. Because even if the first year, we wouldn't be able to, even with selling the fire station in twenty seven, we wouldn't be able to afford the fire department until twenty six. Yeah. So that's where I think we either need to look at Bs or Cs.
Right.
And that's what I was more used to in school anyway.
I have one last comment is, I, I, I have always found it difficult to, to, to put my hand in someone else's pocket and take their money.
Well, that's why we have.
That's why we've done a referendum.
Um, but it hadn't been decided.
And that hasn't been decided and only, you, you guys remember the controversy we had with the one cent sales tax, accusing, accusing us of not being clear on what that one cent was for. A lot of people were outraged over it. So, yeah, referendum, but make it abundantly clear. This is what's coming at you if you vote for this. This is what's gonna, this is how the county's gonna reach into your pocket to do two A or two B or two C, whatever the decision is, might be at the, in a later time.
Uh, Chair, I think everybody was pretty much clear on that one percent sales tax and what it was being used for. The confusion came in when the board would decide that they wanted to use it for something different. But the citizens knew what the one percent sales tax was going to be for because they voted for it. And they did.
Ms. Steele.
The original proposals that we looked at, there were straight out, everything at one year except for body type was held off. And the reason body type was held off is because the school system said it wasn't needed until later in their planning. Is there any merit to looking back at that? I know there were some concerns of the going into the hole that we don't want to do. But I'm just wondering if in between now and July, if there's any other sort of hybrid that might be appropriate that would allow the, the projects to move forward faster, but not put us in trouble.
I, I think for an example, on one A, you, you could, 'cause remember what we've done? We, when we've assumed debt is being issued, we've assumed it's at five percent, twenty years. And we start principal and interest the year after the debt is issued. If we could squeeze out a little more capacity on one A if we did a one or two years of interest only. So it was still twenty years, but maybe it's two years of interest only and eighteen years of principal. So that's just something you could consider doing, which if you did that, you'll get a little more capacity in every case because we're, we're, we're getting further through those limiting years of twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. So something like that, which I don't think, we're not breaking new ground by doing that. That's, that's not an uncommon, um, technique, if you will. So, I mean, that might be a way to, you know, if, if it's helpful to some of you to see, hey, you might be able to get to eight million in year one. I don't know what the magic number might be.
Well, I think that the discussion, at least at minimum, was looking at the eleven million. But I, I would also say that if you look at eleven, we may wanna look at twelve because of the Abingdon Fire Company. So it's sort of, you know, how, how much? I think that's why initially when we met, we were saying that we could do more of these projects at once. And the idea was hopefully they would cost less because of doing them sooner rather than later. So without starting a whole nother conversation, maybe if we work with you again just to kinda look at and send some additional information back out that, uh, to help the board consider if there's some other ways of putting this. Because these are, these are large gaps between being able to work on projects.
All right. Anything, any more questions for Mr. Cole? Comments, concerns? All right.
Thank you so much.
Okay. I'll work on that. All right, let's take about a ten minute break. Let's call the meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to authorize the addendum to the memorandum of understanding and accept transfer of property from Gloucester County Public Schools. Mr. Wilmot.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you will recall, the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors and the Gloucester County School Board entered into a memorandum of agreement dated February fourth of two thousand and twenty-two, which would, which called for the declaration of the old Page Middle School site as surplus school property and turn, and to have it turned over to the county in exchange for the funding of the new school's transportation facility. The memorandum of under, of agreement of the February fourth, two thousand and twenty-two one indicated that once the new facility was substantially complete, that transfer would take place. Although the facility is substantially complete, the fueling facility at the, at the new transportation complex will not be complete until the late summer. And therefore, the schools need to continue to be able to utilize the fueling facility located on the old Page site. So what you have in front of you is a resolution on page sixty-seven and sixty-eight of your agenda packet, which would approve an addendum to the February fourth, two thousand and twenty-two memorandum of agreement in a few respects. It would set a deadline of the transfer of the old Page Middle School site to the county of July one, two thousand and twenty-three. However, it would allow the school board to be able to continue to have access to and to utilize the current fuels facility on the old Page site until the new fuels facility is complete. And thereafter, uh, as long as that fuel, the current fuel facility on the old Page site was being operated by the county, the schools would have, uh, access to it and use of it if for any reason they could not utilize the new fuels facility. That doesn't prohibit the county from at some time in the future closing it, perhaps as part of sale of the property. The, also, the memorandum, the addendum would allow Gloucester County staff designated, designated by the county and in conjunction with the school board to have access to the new fueling facility upon its completion. In situation where our current fuels facility is not operable and we cannot use it, we would also have access to the new fueling facility. So it's sort of a mutually beneficial, uh, proposed amendment to that memorandum of agreement. Uh, I do have a correction. On page sixty-nine, in section three, I misplaced the, a comma. I know. Better a comma than a coma. Which is forthcoming. In the first line, I have the comma after the word and, it should be before the word and. It makes much more better sense that way.
Okay.
All right, that's it. Any questions?
Mr. Bazani.
What happens if the new tenant or owner of the Page site decides they want to shut that fuel facility down?
The, this MOA does not preclude that. It's just envisions that as long as the county has it and uses it and it's operational, the schools would have access to it.
That's fine. So we need to pass the resolution on page sixty-seven and eight and seventy-two and seventy-three, correct?
Yes, sir. The, the res, I'm sorry, I, I didn't mention that one. Resolution on page seventy-two and seventy-three authorizes acceptance of the old Page Middle School site as surplus from the schools. So yes, two separate resolutions.
Okay, so the resolution on page sixty-seven?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Did you get that, Ms. Cronin? There's, there's a second and a third.
Or. Can we get all seven?
Maybe there's, maybe there's a motion and two seconds, now we need a fourth and a fifth and say, get down. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orth? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bazani?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Now, the resolution on page seventy-two to accept the property.
So moved.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bazani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a resolution to authorize acceptance and execution of a right-of-way agreement between Gloucester County and Dominion Energy. Mr. Baines.
If you all get a chance tomorrow, please come by TC Walker between four and six thirty.
Anything special in happening?
No, not special.
A drop-in, drop-in reception.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Come in and see.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you all, thank you for the attention. This is basically right now we have overhead power all the way down to the ranger station on Roaring Springs Road because of, uh, Dominion Power trying to replace as many above-ground lines where they've had, uh, power outages in the past. They wanna put this underground. Our county attorney has reviewed the, uh, the, um, right-of-way, made a few corrections I'd like to note in, in doing that. So what we have here is just basically they're gonna take down the poles and bury the, uh, the power to the ranger station. They need our approval across our property. On pages eighty and eighty-one shows the actual diagram of where it's going if you really wanted to see. All right?
Any questions for Mr. Baines? The resolution on page seventy-five?
Motion approved.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bazani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Baines, along this line, is Dominion gonna work at putting more power lines underground in the county?
Yes, sir. They, they've got a, a team that we've talked to that basically does research to try to do it and they get basically paid by the mile to provide right-of-ways to Dominion to do them underground. We've got a project that was going on down off of Yacht Club Road. We've had one here off of Lewis Avenue. So yes, they're doing it as they find the areas that had the highest, uh, power outages, they're putting those underground.
They've visited ladies' meet.
Yeah, they're gonna restart yours.
Yeah, yeah. We've had people at our house.
And they just did ours, mine, yeah, my lead.
Okay. Um, the next item on the agenda is a discussion and adoption of a mission and vision statement. Let's move that till July.
Yeah, agrees. My, my apologies for sending mine out so late today, but it's, the spark ignited today and I said, oh, I gotta get those out.
But I was sitting there and I'm, this is something that can be pushed off and won't hurt. So I would rather like to do that. Now, discussion of concerns regarding short-term residential rentals. Mr. Hudson. Mr. Hudson. As, proceed. As a few people have spoke tonight, I've gotten quite a few calls about this. And they're concerned that there's no, there's no ordinance, there's no regulations or anything really concerning this. And I stopped, talked to staff when we did agenda construction about what we need to do to not limit it, but just actually make it better for the county involved. And when talking with planning, there's a whole, really, there's no, what's the word I'm looking for? Uh, teeth to control anything. So as a board, I would like for us to get some more information from staff, some ideas of what some other localities are doing. And then change, make it better for the citizens of the county. And I, and I know we're getting calls now because it's summertime and that's what's going on. But it might not be able to affect anything this year, but next year we can have something.
Cause I, I'm with you. I, when the one lady made the, the comment tonight that they live on a private road and everyone's responsible for it, but now the homeowners are, you know, one homeowner's out and they, they don't know who's there. They don't know who's coming in and, and the damage to their road that people are maintaining. So, yeah, I would like to see what our options are and legally what we're allowed to do. Not only just see what other localities will do, but cities and counties are different. I'd like for Mr. Wilmot to see them too before they're just dumped on our lap to make sure that they, we have the ability to affect a positive change.
There are, there are, Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, that's why we're here.
I conducted some preliminary research into the legal avenues to regulate the short-term residential rental properties. And there were really four that I could find. One is you can designate one or more rental inspection districts in your locality. And that would be applicable to all rental or almost all rental properties, which would include these kinds of rentals. You can, cannot do it countywide, but if you had, uh, certain areas of the county, you could do a rental inspection district, which requires registration of the unit with the county and periodic inspections to make sure that the units are compliant with applicable building codes and safety regulations predominantly. Uh, a second thing you could do is you could, there's a mechanism in the Virginia code which allows a locality to form and require a short-term rental registry. So you have to, it's not an inspection district like the first one was. It's a short-term rental registry, which requires that the renters register their available units, which would include these or could include these. And there's a fee associated with that. And if they fail to register and they rent, then they're in violation and they can be prosecuted or fined. I'm not really sure, you can do that. I'm not sure what purpose it serves perhaps in, on the surface, other than getting some money for the county. I don't know. The third is you can. The third is you can utilize your zoning ordinance to reach these kinds of residential rentals. You can regulate them, you can prohibit them in certain areas, it would be part of your zoning ordinance. I think Fairfax County has utilized its zoning ordinance to limit the areas in which these kinds of rentals can, can be, can be used. And the fourth is you can assess your transient occupancy tax. I'm not sure whether our commissioner of the revenue is taking that tact yet.
We are currently collecting taxes from the actual Airbnb corporation, but not from individuals.
Alright.
Who have like the generic Airbnb.
Right, so it sounds like for the most part at least, we're already doing the fourth one, which is assessing the transient occupancy tax. I remember when Kevin Wilson was the commissioner of the revenue, there was some question whether the localities had the authority to assess their transient occupancy tax on the short-term residential rentals or Airbnbs. And it was clear as mud and because our ordinance really talks about hotels, I think Mr. Wilson and I came to the conclusion that although it was his call and it was debatable, we probably shouldn't or wouldn't, but then the Supreme Court decided, Supreme Court of Virginia, decided a case last year or the year before where a locality had assessed the transient occupancy tax on Airbnbs and the Supreme Court of Virginia said that was legal. So even though it was unclear to me, the Supreme Court thought it was clear, so we're allowed to do it and it sounds like we're doing it. So those are the four, and I like the idea, even though I generally don't like the idea of checking with what other localities do, because generally I don't care what other localities do, but I think in this case it's a good idea if you, if you want to get a handle on this to see where other localities have gone and what they've done. And then perhaps I could work with zoning and planning once that's done, or I could help them do that. And we can go over it together and then maybe present a report to y'all.
You're going to appeal that Supreme Court ruling?
No, well, it wasn't, I wasn't involved in it, I wouldn't have lost, but actually, it's fine.
Mr. Hedrick.
So we heard from a couple citizens this evening about some of the problems. I would like just more general information on what the problems are. I mean, is it, is it just one or two people that's complaining or specifically what are the problems?
I think it's, what I've heard is it's loud noise parties at the properties in residential areas where people are having to get up to work the next morning or retired that, like you, that get up at noon and, you know.
It's all true. Never slept at noon.
The, the, just the people outside, the using the private roads, not knowing who's coming and going. It's, it's those issues. But I would offer some hesitancy to you on using Airbnb because that's more of a company and you can keep it as short-term residential.
That's why I generally or typically refer to it as short-term residential rental properties. Yes, I don't want to just be married to one company.
Yeah.
I think, I think Virginia Beach has had some of these discussions because I know it's been in the newspaper a number of times where people have complained that these houses are essentially becoming party houses. So it's not just the family, but it's where all of a sudden gatherings of more than the people that are allowed in the house and having parties and actually ending up having some tragedies.
Well, that's, that's the other issue is the number of people in the houses. Mr. Gibson.
Yeah, I, I, thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate you putting this on the agenda because I've received some concerns as well. And, and I, I think we have to strike a balance of respecting the private property rights of the homeowner, but also having some reasonable guidelines for the folks who want to do this. And I, I did a little bit of research into the Virginia Beach guidelines and that was one of the things, Dr. Orth, that they had addressed because of the risks of large groups of people on decks, that they actually have an inspection program. Now, that, that's a pretty intensive, but that is one of the risks that, that has come about is because a lot of people will pack into these houses, you get a lot of people on the decks, and so it's noise, it's partying. And I think to the point that one of the speakers made tonight, many of these homes are on the river and they're at the end of a private lane that all the residents are contributing to for the maintenance, but then you have these folks coming in who want to enjoy the property, but they're not contributing and these lanes are just getting degraded over time. So I, I think we have to have a balance and I, I really think that this is a good discussion for us to have and we should, we should address it.
Ms. Steele.
I'll mention that one of the issues that I've heard a lot about is people buying these up as commercial investment and they don't live in the state even. And so the law is changing and ordinances, local ordinances requiring that if somebody has a B and B that they, or a short-term rental, that they must live in that locality because then there's somebody for that twelve o'clock phone call versus some company that you call and the person doesn't care and they don't answer. So there's a, I mean, I know Ann's heard about this for years and I have since I was in tourism and there's a lot of information, we'll try to consolidate some things down and then run it by the county attorney and then bring it to you.
Okay. Any more? Next item on the agenda are board appointments. You've got Board of Social Services.
I would like to make the motion that we appoint Mr. Aaron Connor to the social services position that is being vacated.
Okay. Historical Committee, Mr. Gibson, do you have any?
I don't have money to fill that yet.
Okay, Library Trustees.
Mr. Smith, okay, I make the motion that we reappoint both individuals.
Yes, sir.
Is that a second?
That's a second. That's a second.
Where district?
I'm working on it.
He wishes to be reappointed.
He does? Oh, he does want to be reappointed.
That's what I thought.
There you go. Unless you don't like it.
Somebody told me. I told you.
That's what he told me.
Okay. Yes, I, I will make a motion.
Well, let's just, let's just wait until we, I mean, he doesn't go off until December, correct?
No. June. He didn't say yes or anything.
Oh, so he changed, okay. Then make the motion, I'll second it, Mr. Hedrick.
Did he change his mind?
Said yes.
Okay.
Okay, I made the motion.
I'll second that one.
Okay.
Well, I see that's one.
Tourism Advisory Committees. Utilities Advisory for Abington. Okay, we have a motion and a second for Social Services, Library, Board of Trustees and Planning Commission. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Next item is County Attorney Items.
Yes, sir.
You're not happy to be here?
I had another, yes, I am, very.
Okay. Just checking. Boards and Commission Reports. Mr. Crisco.
I want to thank Ms. Steele, we had a productive conversation at our last PDC meeting regarding going further down the, the road with, with figuring out some regional reassessment program and how it would look. And I want to thank Mr. Thomas for helping us lead that effort to help the other adjoining localities find a better solution to the issues they've been having with the reassessments that they've had to do. So just wanted to update you guys on that.
Anyone else? Supervisor Discussion? Mr. Bazana.
We heard concerns tonight about this project, this oyster project out in the water. Would it be possible, Ms. Steele, to have the VMRC come explain the process on how these people get, or is that a good idea?
I, I have sent out the application to all the board members. Yeah, I was going to bring this up, you beat me to it.
That's all right. You'll take over.
The, the VMRC has had one public notification, they'll have another one and then they'll have a meeting where they vote. I was looking and I sent this to everybody and I can actually send you the, the link and the directions on how to go in and look at everything, but I sent you what was on that application at that time. You know, I'm all for aquaculture and I'm all for someone, you know, making money and performing a business here in this county. To me, this size of infrastructure and, and, you know, what they're, what they're proposing, this is not the best location for it. There's a similar one already in the Severn that I, you have to go around, there's no way you can actually get to it. This one at certain tides, you can actually drive over the sandbar and in other tides, times it's ankle deep. Now, it is out of the channel markers, you know, everything they've looked at, it's, it's not going to be a true navigational issue. It's more of the potential of lost revenue to us because of this being in someone's front yard. You heard the gentleman say it's a quarter of a mile. It's, it's still going to be an eyesore in front of homes. The one on the Severn, only thing it sees is trees. No one, no one can really see that from their house. The, this, this application will be seen from people's homes. The folks, Ms. Stoneburner and Mr. Strater, their, their, their back deck is going to be staring at this when they want to watch sunset. So it's, it's, it's one of those things that, you know, it's, it's unsightly, I understand people are wanting to do it, but I don't know if there's any, any thought for the board as a whole wanting someone to draft a letter in opposition. If not, I can, I'm going to be writing my own comments in there because this is a river that I traverse when I am out on the boat. So, but if there's an interest, we can, we can have somebody draft a letter and just put it in the comments there and I will probably be attending the meeting when it occurs.
Just one, just one comment, Mr. Chair. Thirty years ago, we had a, when I lived in York Shores, we had a neighbor who tried to impose complete restrictions of jet skis along the York River and the Board of Supervisors approved it. We later found out that maritime laws, you know, trumps local boards. My question then would be, do we have jurisdiction of these waters? Okay, so we do not, that still holds, we do not have, so we cannot say yea or nay.
No, it's, that, that decision is not ours, it's just, the, the folks that were here were actually looking to see if there would be any thought of the board sponsoring something to help them because all we can do is write a letter to VMRC or to the Army Corps, or we could actually send the same letter to both. I will send you the link and the information that if you want to submit your own comments, you'll have that ability. There's quite a, there's a long list of folks that have gone on and, and expressed their dislike for this project. But if there is any inclination, I think it would be great for the board to consider having someone draft a letter that we could send if the entire board, I'm not going to do this if it's six to one or five to two or four to three, the entire board wants to do this, we can do that, I, I will be submitting my own comments.
Dr. Orth.
Yeah, Mr. Crisco and I have had some back and forth on this. Working for VIMS, I've been involved in a number of these particular projects that influence citizens. I've seen one project that was rejected because of citizen concerns of their view shed and this was behind Parrot Island, a fairly significant proposal that was going to impact not just the view shed, but what comes to the play is its influence on other habitat like seagrasses, which is why I got involved. There was the other one in Milford Haven that got approved despite citizen objections and even though there was seagrass stuff there involved, that got approved. The one thing, and I've, I've attended all these sessions with VMRC to see the way they operate. What I have found is that when citizens go in front of the commission, first of all, the staff will review it and the staff will make their own recommendation, but the board themselves can override the recommendations of the staff, which they have done in the past. The thing that seems to make a difference are the citizens that go there and speak about what this is going to do to their, their view shed. And that seems to hold sway. Now, whether the board wants to provide input, we could as a board express our concern because I've seen the one in Severn, I sometimes can actually get the kayak out there, it's, you can see it from a long way off. I mean, it's, it's massive. And I've seen all the other operations around the bay because there is this new operation for aquaculture that are these suspended cages that float and they float for a reason because they move the oysters around in the cages, that gives them a much better product. Before, all the cages were submerged on the bottom and, you know, they were there and they had, there were other issues, but these new cages are the ones that float and then they're suspected to turn, you know, moving around and that really keeps the oysters clean and gives them a much better shell product, which is how they want to present them. But again, getting back to how the citizens can operate and make a difference is go to the meeting en masse and show pictures and all that, that seems to hold sway. Now, there is, I don't know who, the, the board, the commission has changed, there's some new members of the board. The problem I've seen with the board, this is just my personal opinion, some of the members of the board are in the aquaculture industry.
Correct.
And sometimes they do not accuse them, what's the word?
Recuse.
Recuse, recuse themselves, which I think is inappropriate. And so I don't know where this would hold, I mean, there is a push for aquaculture, it's, I mean, it's, it's a land grab right now for putting stuff out there. I mean, every square yard of bottom that isn't bale ground is being looked at for leasing for aquaculture. So, yeah, it's, 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 it's a land grab because there's such, there's a lot of money to be made in aquaculture and the new methods that are there are amenable to small-time operators leasing three or four acres very easily and operating that. But it is, if you see the one in the Severn, you can see it miles away, the big posts in there, whatever, so it will be in their backyard. So if the board is, wants to make a statement, because I hadn't seen anything coming in these two operations, I never saw Matthews or Middlesex or whatever say anything, but if the board wants to express concern about how these operations will affect property rights and view sheds, we could if we wanted to.
Could, could Mr. Wilmot draft a little? I mean, I'll just send, I have to agree that.
I can send you what I have too, so you can look at, look at what's there.
I mean, it might hold sway, I mean, I think having something from the Board of Supervisors could, could tip the balance.
It, it could. It's, it's not going to hurt and, again, if all seven of you don't want to participate in this, I totally understand. But the, these folks I met on a happenstance and I hadn't talked to them in six months and all of a sudden she's texting me and said, hey, have you seen this? I'm like, I don't know what you're talking about. I mean, you talk about Milford Haven, that these people have, what, looks like six thousand coffins floating out there in the water in front of their house because of what they approved. And that board had a thousand signatures from Matthews County residents and they still approved it. So it could, it could amount to nothing, but, you know, these, these folks are taxpayers just like anybody else and, you know, they, they have reached out, they have done yeoman's work on getting comments online for this permit process and if the board is of a mind, I would, I would like to consider doing this, sending a letter.
Yeah, I think a letter that stresses how, you know, we've obviously supported that project in the Severn River because of the place where they do all their work, which is in Brown's Bay. So it's not like we haven't supported aquaculture in this, of this board. But in this particular situation, you know, this is something that is in a person's backyard. That Severn, like I said, unless you're out in the water, you won't see it, but if you're in the water, you have to be careful, it's, it's, it's pretty big.
Sort of analogous like putting windmills in your backyard, right? You know, Ted Kennedy was all about windmills, windmills, we need to have those windmills in, in the water, but then when they started to put two or three windmills behind his property, he said, I don't want to see that.
But I would, I would stress how, you know, the board has tried to support aquaculture and in this particular situation, you know, is, is something that we're concerned regarding the view shed and how this is going to influence the citizens. And it is a highly used river, you know, North River, there's a lot of people that boat and probably use those areas for recreation.
And I did share this with Matthews County Board of Supervisors as they have their residents on the other side of this river.
And actually, there was another proposal, now where I think about this, there was a sandbar off Cape Charles and there was a gentleman that wanted to use the sandbar exactly like this and the citizens came out and said the same thing, that they would use a sandbar, you know, they'd go out and sit on the sandbar or play whatever and the commission nixed that project.
When is the deadline for submission of comments and/or the hearing?
We don't know that yet.
Alright. Yesterday.
No, no, the, the second advertisement has not gone out, there is There is no date for their meeting to vote on this yet.
So if it's in the next, I guess what I'm asking is, I draft the letter and after hearing from you and then I email it to y'all and then you vet it and then we go from there, right?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick.
So I guess my concern is, I don't have any, I don't have a picture or any concept of how it, what it's going to look like to these peoples, you know, as far as their property and their view and all. That would be helpful to me, to have some actual understanding of what it's going to look like.
I sent, that should be in, in an email that I sent you. It's not the exact what it's going to look like from their point of view, simply because nothing exists like this from a point of view that these people would have. These, these were done originally, I believe in like Australia is where they got their start.
Yeah.
Um, and they're, the one at the Severn, I, I could try to get to on my boat, but it would be a different view because of what's behind it.
So how do the residents know what it's going to look like?
Because there's a very good description of, of what it's going to look like in the email that I sent.
That's what it looks like.
That's it?
That's it.
Is that it or is that the old one?
Hmm. Yeah. Now, those are stationary, they're not floating. Yeah, the floating ones are going to be tied to, you know, cables. And then, because those are, those are placed to the bottom. That's, that's the whole thing, how aquaculture is changing is that.
It's a little different than that too.
It's different than that.
That's a different one, yeah. There's so many different methods that.
I got you.
All right, anything else on this?
Meeting time, will we go?
Nope, nope. I've made an executive decision, we're going to go into closed meeting. We're going to come out and then change the meeting.
Okay.
Whatever we do.
Right.
So we have some time to discuss.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, Mr. Wilmot, would you read us into closed session?
Whereas the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors desires to discuss a particular subject in closed meeting during the course of its meeting of June 6, 2023. And whereas the nature of the subjects is, one, discussion or consideration of the disposition of an interest in publicly held real property known as the Old Page Middle School property. The discussion of same in closed meeting is expressly permitted by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3. And two, discussion or consideration of the disposition of an interest in publicly held real property, water and sewer system. The discussion of same in closed meeting is expressly permitted by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors does hereby convene in closed meeting for the purposes here and expressed pursuant to the legal authority here and recited.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Steel.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bazani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Worth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
All right, we're in closed session.